All right. Calling to the order, the July 15th Special Meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education. This is a meeting held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a community public hearing. There is a time for public comment during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Item 10. If you wish to speak at public comments, the comment cards are right outside the door where you came in. Please fill those out and have those turned in by the time of the superintendent's report. Now, would you please stand and hopefully our new superintendent will lead us into the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Welcome to your first board meeting. All right, so pursuant to MCL 15-268-1C, could I please have a motion to go into closed session to discuss contract negotiations?
I will motion that we go into closed session to talk about contract negotiations.
Second?
Second.
All right, can we please have a roll call vote to move into closed session?
Yeah. Dr. Rashad?
Yes.
Ms. Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Dr. Fosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon?
Yes.
All right, we are in closed session, thank you. It's been there with Mr. Phillips. So let's knock some of these out here, shall we? Can I have a motion to approve consent grouping items 4A1 through 4C1?
I move that we approve consent items 4A1 through 4C1.
Second? Second. Thank you. Is there anything anybody would like to pull out for special consideration? All right, any discussion on these items? All right, can we have a, is there a hopefully brief finance report?
No, not really, there's not much for this group.
Okay. That's kind of what I was expecting, anything for Kirkland?
Same for Kirkland.
Okay, terrific. Yeah. I was gonna say, I mean, most of this stuff isn't anything that would come up at either of those hadn't had committee meetings anyway. So it's all just general stuff that we do. One thing that I would like to point out is one of the things that we are voting on is the schedule of the board meetings for next year. Just a note, it was set out with the packet that the meetings will start at 6:30 next year instead of 7:00. All right, can we have a roll call vote on the consent grouping, please?
Yeah. Dr. Rashad?
Yes.
Ms. Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Killa?
Yes.
Dr. Fosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon?
Yes.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the purchase of cafeteria furniture for Pine Ridge from Costa Workplace Interiors for an amount not to exceed $35,200?
So moved.
Support.
All right, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Dr. Rashad?
Yes.
Mrs. Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Killa?
Yes.
Dr. Fosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon?
Yes.
All right, and can I have a motion to approve the purchase and installation of the replacement boiler for the food service building for Rightway Plumbing and Heating for an amount not to exceed $46,000 including contingency?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Dr. Rashad?
Yes.
Ms. Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Killa?
Yes.
Dr. Fosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon?
Yes.
All right, and based on something that came out of our closed session, could I have a motion that we authorize administration to publish a three-month calendar as permitted by law if a tentative agreement with the Forest Hills Education Association is not reached by July 17th, 2024?
So moved. Support.
Okay, we could do a voice vote on, or just a voice vote on this one, in our favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. That brings us to informational items. Do you have any informational items for us today, Mr. Kirby?
As far as the resignations and undertempts, any additional information on what's in the board packet? I do know.
Okay. All right, then we are up to the superintendent's report, so as a reminder, if anybody wants to speak at public comment, please make sure you fill out the comment card, they will be collected right here. And welcome, Mr. Kirby, to your first official board meeting, and welcome to hear any report you may have for us.
Yeah, well, thank you. It has been a great transition. I've been here, this is my third, start of the third week. The first two weeks have been outstanding, started with a fantastic welcome right in this room, we came together, we had a really nice breakfast, got a chance to meet folks, and ever since then, it's been very similar. Been able to meet with most of you, we'll finalize that today, and we'll be meeting with all the administration over the next month, as well as others, and everyone has been amazing and outstanding, and there's certainly a lot of work to do, but we've got a great team in place to do that, so very pleased to be here, privileged to be here, and looking forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. All right, are there any board communications? No, it's been a meeting, probably somewhere so far, so that's good. All right, so this time, at this time, we welcome members of the committee to address the board. When you are called, please come up to the microphone and state your name and your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the board. For established procedures, we will not respond to questions or interact with the speaker during public comment. Everyone who indicates they would like follow-up from the district will get follow-up from the appropriate administrator. Robert Krebs?
Good morning. Oh, okay. The only thing I want to get up real quick is with the current situation with finances and what's going on, also with the enrollment going down, one of the concerns that I brought up in the past is regarding the swimming pool, the $52 million. It was brought to my attention that you all look at different pools, and one of the pools, they said, Robert, we looked at one in Elkhart. And Elkhart is a gorgeous facility, and it's over $72 million, it's got everything, so we're already spending $52 million. But so, as you know, I'd like to research things. And first thing on that Elkhart pool, I found out that, yeah, it is $72 million. They got $30 million from philanthropic donations, they've got $12 million from the city of Elkhart, they had the community schools put in $9 million, they also, the RV industry paid for it. So all the things that are toward the $72 million, the school district paid less than $10 million for the swimming pool. So that's a concern that we need to look at, because if you amortize that $52 million loan, the total payout in 30 years is $112 million on the 347 million bond. So I looked into that, and that's based only at 6% interest, I based it on 30 years, and debt to service ratio 1.25. But that doesn't include also the operations. When you put in the operations, your managers and your swimming directors and your lifeguards and all that, you're talking about approximately another, potentially being about another $400,000. So you have a debt service of almost $800,000 a month on the pool. The other part about it is, if it's able to generate cash to make it work, that would be wonderful, if you could really make it work, but it's not going to be like a YMCA, it's gonna be a pool. The one in Elkhart is a full working community pool, and it's also got workout rooms and has all that. We're talking about a swimming pool by itself. So the only reason why I wanted to bring it up is to look at it a little closer, to spend all that money and not know the overhead of what it costs to operate the pool, to know that even based on 6%, we're still talking about $112 million payout to get it all the way through. And also, in the case of Elkhart, their enrollment dropped 1,000 students, so they're down to like 11,000. They are already looking to close a school building. They're trying to figure out now, before it gets any worse, to start cutting costs where it will not affect the student's education, the teachers' funding, to find ways to start chopping. And with what, even though we're gonna be a school of a choice, we need to look into that area to find out money to be saved. So I just wanted to bring up those points, and then I also have one of these, I'll give to Val, just to show you, it was based on a swimming pool, competitive pool, as well as another pool. And that's where I got my answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, at this time, all the comments are closed, the board thanks you for your input, and the appropriate representative will follow up if you request it. All right, and we moved public comment up a little bit to, instead of putting it at the end, because we have a workshop for the next couple of hours with Mr. Phillips, and we certainly don't want to make our friends sit around and wait for two hours while we do a workshop. So the official business portion of our meeting is now done, and we're gonna move in and welcome Mr. Phillips for board governance workshop.
Well, good morning, how's everyone? I was very similar to Mr. Kirby, in fact, that I always wore a suit and tie, until my board mandate could finally enter about eight years being there, that no tie in July.
It's a good start, Dave.
But anyways, welcome, Ben. It's exciting to go through this process as a board and new superintendent. There's always some enthusiasm that's running rampant with the district as you change leadership and so forth. I know there's some hesitancy too, but I think overall, it's gonna be the positive atmosphere that'll take over. And you need to capture that, as a board, obviously, it's going to impact you, because I'm sure things are going to change a little bit, we're trying to get everybody to understand one another, and for the aid of you to work together. Now, some of the stuff I have this morning, I think is gonna be a reiteration of what you heard from Nick earlier in the year about board governance and so forth. So I'm gonna go through some of that fairly quickly, but if you need to talk about it, have questions, interrupt me at any time. I do not want this to be a sit and get. I can talk for two hours, or three hours, or four hours, if you want me to. I really don't want to. So please, ask questions, I wanna make sure everybody's on the same page as we move forward. Make sure I operate this the right way now. I think bottom goes, bottom is, and that's what I'm doing. How's that? All right, so.
I think this is more for you.
Okay, same here. Board governance, performing team, standards of practice, which I know you implemented with Nick, I do have a question or two on that, that I want to bring to your attention, and then evaluating and potentially goal-setting as we go through this, because I think that's gonna be important. So stay engaged, if you can, please. Doesn't mean we have to agree everything as we go through this respectfully, dissent, value our differences, there's always differences on board of education, with the board of education members. Speak up. We don't know what you're thinking unless we hear from you. Always listen to learn, okay? And to understand, it's not listening to respond, big difference there. Check for understanding, ask me for clarifications, I'm going on my experience, my experience working with boards of education, my experience as a superintendent, and what I've seen around the state as we go through this. Acknowledgements, I just want to give credit where credit is due, a lot of this comes from Dr. Tim Quinn, who initiated Michigan Leadership Institute back in 1998, if I remember my date correctly, about a year after I started superintendent, so long time ago. Also, John Carver and the governance model, we always hear about Carver and Mr. Carver, but knowing my audience, a little heavy on the female side in this board of education, Miriam is the author of this book as well, so she.
I honestly wondered why you did not say her name.
It's amazing how she doesn't get credit out there, you don't hear her name very often, but her name is on everything that he has out there. And then, good to great, for Jim Collins, you know, it's obviously something that's been out there for a number of years now, but something that I think people still follow. So let's talk about your job description as board of education. Most people will tell you that it revolves around hiring a superintendent and setting policy, and that is absolutely correct. Hopefully, you never get to the third job duty, and that's firing a superintendent, but that would be your duty as well. But I do want to point out some other things. You're also approving the district plan, I know strategic plan is out there sometime for you, I think that's important to look at. You want to be able to talk about how you're going to define success as a board of education, that's important for you as well. You're going to keep tabs on the community, you all have different constituencies. That's one thing you bring to the table that Ben doesn't at this point, your knowledge of this community, so it's important to bring that to the table. You are going to establish policies, you are going to support the superintendent and communicate well with the superintendent, those are necessities to be a good board of education. You're gonna ensure constituent services. What does that mean? Are we taking care of all kids at all times? You've heard me speak on that before, that's absolutely imperative. You don't know who's gonna walk through your door today, or tomorrow, or six months from now. Your job is to educate these kids. Parents are giving you the best product they have, and from there, you have to move that forward, okay? Model professional development, I think it's important for board members to be educated as well. You just, I get it, you go to a major company and you look at their board of directors, they're all experts in what that business, or portion of that business is all about. We come to a board of education, how many of you are experts on education? You've been through education, I get that, but there's a lot of other intricacies with that, with union relationships, with negotiations, with school law, which is different than other law. And you need to be acclimated to that and be willing to learn for that. And then, be accountable for success. Make sure that you honor your kids and your staff and your program as you go through this. So I think it's a little bit more expansive than just set policy and hire superintendent. Again, eyes and ears of the community are absolutely essential. What about the superintendent? Their job description, they're the CEO of the district, number one. They manage the day-to-day operations of the district, that is not where the board of education comes in. He needs to be aware of everything that happens in this school district, and he needs to be able to assign the appropriate personnel to figure out how we deal with the situation, whether it's academic, whether it's personnel, whether it's finance, whether it's special education, he still needs to be aware. The whole idea of no surprises in a school district, you don't want to surprise a board of education by asking him some question at a board meeting that you've never brought to his attention before, and he doesn't want to surprise you as board members by saying, oh, by the way, I would like to add this to the agenda, okay? We can't operate that way. We're operating as a team, so the left hand and the right hand should know what's going on. He's going to implement the district's plan, so we set the strategic plan for the school district, which some of you may be intimately involved with in developing along with the superintendent and other community members and staff members, but once that is set and it's board approved, he needs to implement that. It's gonna be on his shoulders, but please understand, his shoulders are about this broad, because he's gonna use the personnel in the district to attain those goals, and that's what we want to have happen. He can't do it by himself, all right? He's gonna hire great staff, and he's gonna terminate poor staff, and that will happen, and you need to understand that. And sometimes people cause that on their own accord, that's usually what the case is, all right? We try to coach them, we try to bring them along, we want to get the best out of them that we are as educators, but sometimes people just don't want that, and there has to be a separation. He's gonna communicate with the board, and he's gonna support the board of education out there, okay? So again, that's a two-way street as we go through this, and then he's going to be the first learner, the first teacher, the first advocate for education that's out there. So that's typically the case. He's going to keep his eyes and ears open to do processes and procedures, do programs out there, and help bring those forward. Every idea does not have to be his, though, okay? Ben has been in this business long enough that I'm sure he would tell you, I don't care where the idea comes from, if it's a good one, let's explore it. We may tweak it to make it rightly Forest Hills, but you've gotta be a good thief in this business, you better be a good thief as a teacher. You don't have all the answers, so learn from others, it's important to go through that. And then, the last circle in the lower right-hand corner, this is where the hat rack gets long, everything else that's out there. There's not one thing that'll happen in this district that at some point he could be held responsible for. Bus driver leaves a first grader on the bus, it's happened, right? Who's gonna answer to the public? It's probably gonna be the superintendent in that situation. So we've gotta be careful, that's why he needs to be in the know, it's actually imperative. Your relationship, the governance team, we talked about this as we hired a superintendent, it's the aid of you running the district. You're setting the policy, the mission, the vision for the district, the strategic plan, he's implementing that, and he's doing the day-to-day operations. It cannot be two different islands, it can't be the board and the superintendent working against each other, it's gonna be totally dysfunctional. Really work on getting, becoming part of the same team. It can't be dominated by the superintendent. Yes, he brings some knowledge and expertise to this position, without a doubt, but does he know Forest Hills really well at this point? I doubt it. Is he gonna learn Forest Hills? I would think so. This is where you come in, okay? Your institutional knowledge of not only the school district, the community, the business members and so forth, is imperative for his start, okay? Share that, okay? And I know he's meeting with each of you, he's gonna have those same meetings with the administration, just as he said, he's gonna make sure that he understands the resources he has around him as well. It's not a one-way street, and it's not totally his show. This district is bigger than any one of us in this room. If he were to leave tomorrow, this district still has to operate. If CJ goes off the board, this district still has to operate, so the district is bigger than any of us. But remember, again, the aid of you working as a team. It can't be the board dictating to the superintendent what's going to happen either. If you're into a position like that, the superintendent then usually has to make the decision. Am I gonna do things that are not sound educationally? If that's the case, or am I gonna get my resume ready? Okay? So it's important that you work together, understand clarity, communication, absolutely essential. This is what you want. When you look at your Venn diagram, that's what you want. Everybody's bringing something to the table, but you're also working together to come up with the best outcomes, okay? Any questions on that at all? I know you've heard that before, you've heard it from me before, you've heard it from Nick before. Here's something that I think is really appropriate for Forest Hills, though, and it's something that I heard loud and clear as I did focus groups here. The problems with boards, and I can say the problems with school districts are not failures of the people, they're failures of the process rhythm, okay? Your systems, your processes need to be clarified, okay? That came through loud and clear from administrators, from teachers, from parents. And communication and systems can go together, all right? They're not separate entities. If you are a good communicator and have a good communication system, your other systems seem to flow, because if you're a good communicator, you need to understand that people need to know. People provide input, need to be felt like they were listened to. I think you have a chain of communication in place here. Some people want to call it a chain of command, in education, I think we try to stay away from that chain of command and call it a chain of communication. It needs to be adhered to, okay? But it hasn't been, okay? Principals would tell me they would go to one assistant superintendent, and then another assistant superintendent would overrule that assistant superintendent, so it would change the outcome of decision-making, and people didn't really know who to go to. My view right now is that it's gonna be absolutely imperative that that chain of communication is followed for everyone, okay? That's gonna bring the consistency back into the district, and that's what you need. People, you need to know what the expectations are, right? When you're working. And I'm not sure that's totally there at this point. You've got a great district, I'm just offering these as things to improve, nobody's perfect, but you've got a great district. The Carver model, you've got boards that, they really develop policy in four areas, process, basic understanding of how the board will conduct business. You have that in your policy, you also worked with that with Nick a little bit, I believe, I think it's well done, okay? There's another way to go about this, and I'll show you an example, I'm not saying one's any better than the other. What you're comfortable with is what you have to pursue, but as you look at the basic understandings of how, understanding of how the boards will do business, I go to your governance statement, and on number three, you have, we will study the issues, provide input, incorporate stakeholder input, and rely on superintendent staff and other board members before making a decision. My question in that one statement is, you will incorporate stakeholder input. You know, from some divisive issues that come about, you can get a multitude of stakeholder input, right? Should that read, we will consider stakeholder input instead of incorporate it? I know it's wordsmithing, but if I come to you, Mary or Kristen, and I say, this is what I want to see, we want to change DEI, or we want to change whatever is out there, and it doesn't happen, I go back to your governance document and say, you didn't incorporate my input, you said you would do it, you all signed a statement, how come you're not doing it? Just, I hate wordsmithing, but that to me is, it could be a valuable change for you on that. What's that? You love wordsmithing. Right, so that's just something I wanted to bring to your attention as I read that, and otherwise, it is well done. You've laid out the expectations, I think it's pretty clear, it's well written and so forth, that was the only item.
Dave, you're referencing this governance.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and I've got Mary Vaughn's name on the top of my one, I'm not sure. No, Val sent it out to me and so forth, and I think Nick might have sent me actually a copy too, because he has shared everything with me as we've talked. The other way to govern the board, CEO relationship, again, we've talked about that a little bit, you guys need to understand each other's needs and stay in them. Frank conversation is absolutely crucial, but it doesn't always have to take place in this room. You've got access to Ben, he's got access to you, if there's questions, bring them up to each other so you can gain an understanding of what people are thinking about, all right? We don't want to hide information, that's not what we're after. However, to try to meet the communication needs of these seven people as a superintendent can be challenging, because you all have different expectations and nuances and so forth. Now expand it to the administrative staff, to the teaching staff, to the community, that is why it's important to be able to tell Ben, well, the people I'm talking to aren't understanding what we're talking about with this body expenditure. Is there a way we can put it in a simplified form, get it on the website so people have a better understanding? Those things are crucial. I mean, a cool example here, right here today, something that may be worth looking into, it's just, you need to make sure that gentleman is informed, and he needs to make sure you're informed before you make any decisions, no surprise, I won't say that enough, probably will. The N's, the policies that establish the purpose and intended outcome of the organization, that mission statement, that vision, that strategic plan, what do you want in this district? And Ben and I talked a little bit. And Ben and I talked a little bit about the strategic plan and I've worked with a couple of their districts that have hired a superintendent. And their immediate charge to the new superintendent is, "We want a strategic plan done now." I will just put this out there. Do you think your current superintendent has a full understanding of this community, this school district, all the connections, the district's processes and procedures that you're all about?
He's been here two weeks.
All right, right. He's supposed to be a fast learner, right? You know, I, I think you're better off, and we just went through this with the district down south a little bit, finally convinced the board to wait a few months. They waited until the first of the year to really get going in the strategic plan because the superintendent had a better hold of what was going on. Better handle on everything. It's, it's something that I think is necessary. He doesn't typically lead the strategic plan. Sometimes an outside organization will come in, but he's going to be an instrumental part of it. And hopefully, he'll have a good understanding by that time of what some of the strengths and weaknesses of his administrative staff really is and who maybe he can have help lead these different charges out there. So, consider that as you, as you go through that. The means, the policies that establish the limitation on the superintendent. And the best example I use, I think I can think of to make it black and white is, as we went through bond projects, there's a lot of change orders that come through, okay? We can go with the carpeting. We're gonna go with different blinds. We're gonna add three square feet to a room, whatever it might be. The board usually gives the superintendent a maximum dollar amount that he can spend without bringing you to the Board of Education. When I sat in the seat back many years ago with a $25,000 limit I had, that I could approve change orders and make sure the project kept moving along. Because if he can't do that, I'm gonna tell you, you guys are gonna have 30 board meetings a month, all right? You've got a big bond issue going through. So that, but that's his limitation. Anything above that, then, it has to come to the board for approval. Now, that $25,000 figure a dozen years ago is probably gonna be up a little bit now, but it's something that's black and white. I know where I can make the decision. And I even worked with construction managers that came through and said, "Well, it's gonna be $28,000." And I said, "No, I can't do anything unless it's $25,000 or under." It's amazing how the price dropped. Because they wanted to keep going too. But, you know, so those are some of the limitations that are out there. Policies set limitations for him as well. And it's imperative that those are followed. Ben needs to understand, and I think does, is sitting in the seat. The board owns this organization on behalf of the, on behalf of the residents here. You're put in these positions by a vote, all right? And every couple of years, you go through that again and seats will change, or may change, or may not change. Again, you employ Ben to be the CEO and you're delegating him to run the district. Not on an island, keeping you informed and using the talented people he has around him. Please understand, as a Board of Education, you should only be hiring one person. That's him. Now, you may have policies that he needs to bring professional staff to you to be hired and give you okay. But really, he's the only one that answers to the Board of Education. And as a superintendent, professional staff I had to bring to the Board of Education for their final approval. Support staff, I didn't, didn't need the board's approval. However, when we hired a new paraprofessional or a secretary or whatever, did I make sure the board was informed? Absolutely. They, they knew we were looking for those positions before we hired. So, again, that's just keeping everybody up to date and having that information way in advance. Make sure, and we talked about this a little bit as we voted for your superintendent, you speak with one voice. The board makes a five-two decision. The Board of Education has made a decision. The two people that maybe didn't get their way, the answer out in the community is, "The Board of Education has made a decision. This is where we're headed." It's not that those darned five people made this decision and I disagree. You're gonna have all kinds of acrimony, I guess, if you go that, that route. Speak as a board. Speak with one voice. I realize not everybody gets their way. If the superintendent does their job, there's going to be very few non-seven oh votes, okay? Because he's gonna put information to you guys well in advance, maybe multiple times, before you even make decisions. And a lot of decisions you know, that come to you, the facts speak with the facts speak, and that's the decision that will have to be made. There may be other times. I mean, we had to close a school once and one of my biggest supporters on the board was adamantly opposed. It was a six-one vote. And closed a brand-new elementary school. But he stood up after that vote was taken and told, we had 400 people in the audience, which was a pretty big deal back then, told everybody, "I support the board 100%." And this is what we're gonna do. That was a neat statement. And it calmed a lot of people down, all right? So, stick together. Stick together. You may not always get your way. Read the room, have your conversations. Don't necessarily phone call and text each other. Have person-to-person conversations, because you get to read people better. And if you listen to me on the phone, you may not pick up all the nuances. In texts, you certainly don't, or email. Go visit people, talk to each other. There's nothing wrong with that. You're gonna hold a CEO accountable for his, his success. That's how you follow the strategic plan. And then you are evaluating the CEO on an annual basis. Talking to Mary a little bit. I forget when we had the conversation. You're going in, you're planning on going to a closed session every three months to talk about evaluating the superintendent. I think that's absolutely the way to go. You don't, you don't do the formal one or the formative one until the end. So it's really conversation, those first three evaluations you have. How are things going? What can we improve on? And you know what? Everything that happens in this school district is under the auspices of the superintendent, somehow. So that kind of opens up that closed session to talk just about anything. But it should be evaluated, it should be related to the evaluation in some, some respects. It's pretty easy to make that connection, all right? I know some superintendents hesitate. Well, what's gonna go on? Some community members, all of a sudden, start asking questions. Well, how come they're evaluating the superintendent after three months? People will get used to that. That you're going in there, you're talking about things, you're trying to improve the dialogue, the accountability of everybody involved in this process. Ben must realize that you need adequate information to make decisions. If you don't get it, you need to ask for it, okay? If there's something I put in a data sheet or a data profile that you can't follow or my logic isn't the same as CJ's logic and I'm not being able to follow everything, speak up, okay? Because it can be presented in another format. You need to understand what you're voting on. And usually when you do, I think that's when you use the bit of seven oh votes. It's Ben's responsibility to make sure he incorporates the talents of the other staff members. He's gonna find out the quality of people you have in Forest Hills. Even though he was an instructional person for years, you may have an instructional person that he sits back and says, "Wow, you know, they're, they're a half a step ahead of me." He's gotta be able to relinquish that, use their talents to bring everything along. That doesn't mean he's left out in left field on that, because they need to keep him apprised of what's going on. But it's, it's just imperative the use of people around you. There's a lot of good people here. Utilize them. And I think with conversations, Ben already realizes that. And then, again, reiterating the board and CEO, CEO communication, all eight of you are responsible, okay? And this young lady's gonna be in the loop a lot too and you're gonna have, CJ may call Val, "Hey, Val, can you set me up with an appointment with Ben? I need to talk to him about such and such." You know, Val's gonna be a crucial part of that. She probably knows as much what's going on in this district as anybody, maybe other than the superintendent. She's in that seat. And she understands the confidentiality aspect of that. Great to work with through this process. So, what about questions on governance, roles, responsibilities? What can I help you with?
I have a question, like you just brought up on the last slide, about us getting adequate information. So I guess the question, like, you know, in going through the process of being a new school board member is, I guess I would like to know what it looks like, let me try and word this correctly. When we're given information, sometimes I feel like we're getting information to get a yes vote from us. And I'm more like, I would like to see all the information. And that's my personality. So I'm making a well-informed vote or decision, you know what I mean, a decision based on the informa, you know what I mean, like the information set in front of us. And so, we're missing key pieces that maybe, I don't wanna say it's being withheld, but doesn't, maybe one side doesn't seem like it's important that it needs to be. I mean, how does that work? I guess I, maybe I'm not explaining myself correctly. And I can give an example. I'm just saying, it's.
You pick up the phone and call Ben. Say, "Ben, I'm trying to understand this. Can you help me out? Can we sit down and talk? Or can we do this over the phone?" That clarification is absolutely crucial.
If I could expand on something. So, part of my role or responsibility is to make recommendations or give options to the board to consider. When we're bringing something to the board, it's on the board agenda for consideration. Typically, that's gonna be a recommendation. There are gonna be some things that are more challenging, where we might have to, like Dave talked about closing a building. You know, there might be some options of, you know, the years or which buildings. So the board would have to, you know, make some, have some discussion and go through that. But one of my goals, and I've met with six of the seven, I've got to wave at them today and I've talked to them about this, is to try to incorporate our monthly meetings, small group meetings. And my goal on that is so that we can get all your questions answered before you get to the board meeting. And so if there are things that come up or that are on your heart and mind that we know about and so we can give you answers prior to the consideration at the actual board meeting. So that'll be one of the things that, you know, you know, basically, I've been pretty positive with those, having those monthly meetings and figuring out the time to know and all of that. But I think that will help with your information, because ultimately, I have to know that you have questions and without us having some sort of connection, we aren't gonna be able to address your questions until we're sitting here at the table. And at that point, like David talked about, it could be an element of surprise and I'm not gonna go get you the information because I didn't know it was a need. And, you know, so that we're in a, in a situation where we can't build trust because I'm not able to answer your question because I didn't know the question. So, hopefully, some of those things can kinda help us, because I want you to know everything that is of question to you before we actually get here. So, again, 95% of the stuff is gonna be recommendations. It got on the agenda because myself and the board, and the board president, when we built the agenda, felt like it was best for the district, so it became a recommendation. So ultimately, when it is on the agenda, you know, my hope is that the, that we know enough about the district and the community and the board that this is something that can move the district forward. I don't know if that helps, but it's.
It does. And I think the other piece of the puzzle is like, for when we're being presented like at finance or curriculum on certain things, like sometimes it's asking questions during that meeting. Like, or do, I mean, I've, I've heard it both ways. I'm not supposed to ask questions at the finance meeting about stuff, but it's like, it's right there. And I know we've asked questions about things, so. But I, right, but I've been told not to. I, I would, I.
Well, I would.
Somebody said that they didn't appreciate me asking questions at the meeting. And I'm like, okay, so I'm trying to figure out, like, you know, and I get it that I'm supposed to call. What I'm looking at is, and I'm just gonna use it as an example, is the cell tower. There was a lot of key pieces in looking into the cell tower that were, I don't wanna say excluded, but that they were missed. And in, in coming forward and finding out more key pieces from that, it's like, when we get the information, I think I'm gonna realize it's a recommendation coming. And it's not that a whole bunch of experts got together and decided that this, you know what I mean? Like this is what, the be-all and the end-all of this. This is, you know, you want my yes vote on this. It's just like, this is a recommendation coming forward and that we have a chance to explore, you know what I mean? And ask more questions in regards to it and maybe do a little bit of research on, like, we're making a, a decision. I, I think with cell tower I'm looking at, there's, you know, there's a little bit, there's safety on both ends of it, right? So I guess what I want, I feel like sometimes there's pieces of information that are not given to us that, that seems like somebody knew about, but wasn't presented to us. Like, I, I wanna look at the pros and the cons.
Exactly.
Right, and, and I don't feel like that sometimes that's being presented on some of the subject matters, that it's just, here it is and then, you know, I, I, yeah. So I guess that's, and, and I'm grateful that Ben is, is very much a very communicated, you know, person. And, you know, is, is, that's gonna probably calm some of the fears with that. But I think some of the questions that I sometimes ask, I'm, I'm generally asking because it's like, I think it could go, it's just pushing, it's just pushing it further. I wanna push it to the point where we've exhausted, in some ways, the negativity out of it, because the, the public's gonna ask us, right? So I think I wanna be well-informed on the subject matters, or yes.
First of all, and it's something I started do, doing after some years' experience, I guess, our committee meetings would always have an other on it. We always posted our committee meetings, okay? And there's some question whether you have to do that or not with the laws and, and lawyers seem to go back and forth on that. So I don't, no work stands on July 15th, but usually you have a committee, finance meeting or whatever, many times it's posted. So we'd have an agenda draw, but I would also have other. Committee meetings, we never had people attend it, okay? We had the three board members, but nobody else attended. So if we're in a finance meeting and Holly, you wanna ask a question under other about personnel, I'm gonna answer that for you, okay? Or if it's something on finance, you need to have the answers to the questions that you're asking to help you make a decision. There's always pros and cons. You know, you used the word exhausted, you know, and you wanna take it that far. Sometimes decisions are time-sensitive, okay? And you have to move a little bit quicker than others. But then, that means I need to do a good job as a superintendent to get all those facts out to you. But I can't think of any decision you make that there's typically not some pros and cons to, okay? I think con list might be this big and the pro list is that big or vice versa, but you, you need to take the time and ask your questions that you understand.
And keep in mind, we always did that. Our finance and our board curriculum meetings were sacred because you could talk about anything. Every supportive person in the room would leave and we'd close the door and have an evaluation session. We don't have that luxury anymore, so that's why I think many of us tapped into Ben's idea that he brings his board in smaller groups to, you know, allow for those hash-out sessions, you know, so.
But it's good to hear, because I have been pulled aside and I've been told that I'm not allowed to do that. And I, and that doesn't make any sense. Like I'm gonna spend, like, like make your phone calls or do it and I'm thinking, I'm, I'm right here, like, I'm physically here and the parties that are in, that have the answers are right here in the room and so, and we did that. We asked a lot of questions on that one and that went back and forth, remember? It was, and it was very informative. I felt like I left and I had a few more things that I wanted to, to look into based on, you know, the temperature in the water with, between what was being presented and community, but I just felt like I got, I got kinda shut down a little bit and I, I didn't, you might get pulled aside afterwards, but during that finance meeting you raised your questions.
Yeah. I, I think the other thing is, and I, I think I shared this story with the board before, we had a board member or a wannabe board member that came to every board meeting, take their three to five minutes, always ask questions, and he eventually got on the board. And he wondered, because he questioned a lot of things that were going on. He got on the board and three months later he came knocking on my door one day and said, Dave, I need to apologize to you. And I said, for, for what? And he said, I never realized that all these board members have all this information and previous communication from you to make that seven oh decision at a board meeting. I mean, you just went through a list and you went through consensus agenda, right? If you had a room packed full of people, they don't understand the information you've had ahead of time. But you gotta remember, this is a school board meeting in the public, it's not a public meeting. Big distinction there. So I think it's, it's great that you ask the questions and my job as a superintendent is to make sure I can answer your questions. If you ask any question in a committee meeting that I don't have the answer for, Holly, I'll get it for you and I'll get back to you. Time's up. All right, we're done. But no, it is, it's absolutely imperative to have your questions answered, okay? So speak up, because, because I can't read everybody's mind.
And that's why it's imperative to do it at the committee meetings so that you guys have time, everybody else hears, it might spark other questions and he has time to get those answers.
Right.
If you're sitting at the board table on Monday when you're supposed to vote and you have questions, then you don't have the right people, then-
Yeah, right, but I think sometimes too is the discussion that happens at the board meeting, sometimes you get hit with somebody ten seconds before we walk in the room of somebody who might have had additional question and you're like, and sometimes I have, I've gone, like I've gone to CJ and say, hey, can you quick, it's mine and I've gone to Val or whatever, or the superintendent said, hey, just I wanna, you know, or Kristen then say, hey, can you just quick explain this because I just got hammered, you know, walking in, which is not fair, I mean, the public should just, you know, call, obviously, but that's, that has happened too, so it just, I'll send in more questions, but-
Maybe you have something that-
Oh, I was gonna say, I was gonna say, that is another thing that is a small thing, but I appreciated that Dr. Schubel had instituted this year, was that when a question was asked throughout the course of the week or week and a half, whatever it was in between her different board communications, she would incorporate what that question was and what the answer to that question is.
In her update.
In her, in her weekly updates. And sometimes those were going to be about items that were gonna be part of our consent agenda and sometimes they were just items that the community was talking about. And maybe I hadn't even had that question, but it was good for me to see that other people were facing that question to the end that came up later. So I do feel like any bits of communication like that are helpful, even in between those additional little tiny things that we might have to deal with them.
Yes. And this is where I differ from some superintendents, and I don't know where Ben stands on this, but I'm gonna bring it up. There's seven people on this board, there's seven votes on this board. CJ's vote is just as important as the board president's vote, okay? They all count in one column or the other. Everybody ought to have the same information. However, the only distinction I ever had is the board president usually saw the agenda before the rest of the board members does. And it's, it's in your governance too that these two are gonna set the agenda. So Dr. Fawcett may have that agenda two or three days ahead of you or have a good idea of what's on that, but you're going to get, all right? And that's just a timeliness issue and that's part of the systems and the processes you're using. But Kristen really shouldn't have information that Mallory doesn't have in order to make a vote.
Holly had something we've questioned before, said a solid decision may have been made and we're like, we have no idea why this happened and it happened at the presidential levels. And so that's something that we brought up a couple times, so.
And you know, while we're doing this and Kristen knows, we just have tried to, I've tried to bring up a few times, this is interesting because it's not a board decision, it's an operational decision, and I'm gonna go through the specifics to make it more clear. Holly called me in February, March, we have an eighteen-year practice where any fourth grader in this district can apply to our environment school. And she said, does it make sense to you, since three of my kids have gone through there, that we would prevent our Spanish immersion kids from going there? I said, it does not, and this is what I would do. So she ended up talking to the right people and the way it played out was we had a decision made, I don't know that any problem was ever identified, whereas a decision would need to be made. I don't know what options were used to make that decision and I don't know what data or research supports the ultimate, the decision that was made. And I did bring it up to the people in question and never got the answer. So Ben and I talked about this the other day and he said that would've been communicated. We've been in a year of change and a lot of things happened.
Three years.
Well, yeah, for sure. But as far as how to hold change on a board. So that, I still, I would still like to know why the decision got made because we do what's best for kids and we've just told the faith of our district, they no longer have that opportunity. And I, I'm fine if nobody gets it, it's most likely near and dear to me and maybe you because our kids went through there. Did you know about this?
Yeah, but I did, I did talk to, oh my gosh, Scott in depth on that and I thought that this explanation is good enough for me to feel like, okay.
Well, that's the problem, I, I don't think that-
So, but that isn't shared all out, and that's the problem.
And Holly too, we've never gotten a second.
Because there wasn't a board decision. But even, but even if it's not, but what, even while it's not a board decision, I understand that, that mantra and I don't disagree with this.
Same.
But we still have to be able to dialogue with people in the community about these things to hopefully put their minds at ease. And even if you don't agree with the decision, Mary.
Right, right.
There is still the data there to support it, but I guess it needs to be shared.
Yeah, that should be, well, that's so, honestly, I thought that was so big, everybody should have known.
Well, and I think when we, when we go and we find out individual questions about stuff, like I know CJ and I talked about the bond issue, about like, were we being charged or not? Well, then I found out information and so I was talking to people that we were talking about a bit and we were still like, but this was what was told to us, but this is what the townships are saying, but that was a, that wasn't really key piece of the puzzle in, you know, like, in, in kind of decision, because meanwhile, we were telling the public one thing, you know what I mean, or what we were told. So I think when we get information that is very key and pertinent, maybe in things that we ask, that I don't feel like we should keep it to ourselves, and that's why I feel like we should discuss it because like, hey, that's a question I had, here's what was told to me and was explained very well. Do you know what I mean? Like, I, and I think for me, coming in, I might be coming in saying, I'm, I'm dead-set against this, but somebody finding out additional information and we're discussing that topic is, is, that might completely change where I'm at because it might've been something, a question that I didn't ask and I, you know, I may have only asked these questions where somebody else might've asked these and then you're putting the pieces of the puzzle-
And that's the question that Maggie said, if you kinda care things and he sounds like he's a communication aficionado, hey, I understand, we've made a decision as an administration that some of you might need a little more information on, so either come chat with me or let me tell you the background.
I think it was very different because we had, we, we didn't have Ben. We did not have our, we had an interim superintendent.
Right.
Who really Scott and Julie and Christine are the ones who really held the most information at that time on topics like that. Prior years, it would've been, I would've asked superintendent and, you know, he would've had the information to give to me that would've gone to everybody. So I think that might've been an outlier, to be honest, because of the setup of our communication with an interim superintendent.
Well, it might, it might be an outlier, but I also think this is a pattern of weakness here from the last couple of years. And I think it goes back to what you said at the beginning, Dave, the problems with boards are not failures of people, but failures of processes. And I do think that we have, we have experienced some of that and I think that we are hopefully new dawn, right?
Right.
So things will, will be on the up and up with this, because I do firmly believe that even if I don't agree with the decision that somebody in the district made, it is not my job as a board member to change that decision necessarily, right? But if I have the information, if I'm, if I'm equipped with the information, which is part of those good processes, it is a little bit easier to digest that and then disseminate that to people who are really curious about it.
Right.
It's clear to me that you heard that we like having the questions that were given to you and really get that, because I believe, of course, that solves challenges.
Well, and I think, and I think too, just to add, there's times that I've asked questions and then I don't get the answer, it goes to Kristen and I'm still waiting for an answer on a decision and, you know what I mean, because that's what the administration has done, has just given her the answer. But I'm trying to come up with like the points of why, like the pros and cons of the subject matter and stuff and I, and so like, for instance, I've asked somebody, hey, did you know, you gave my email? Yes, I did. Well, can I have the information? They said, well, I gave it to Kristen. And I'm like, and so I'm trying to figure out, like I, like I don't understand, like I, I asked for it because I'm, I'm trying to, you know, connect some dots here in my own head, so I think that's a, you know, a key thing and I get it, like I appreciate the communication because I did ask a question on something and then the communication that came out and so I love, hey, you know, like, like that helps me out, like, you know, it wasn't like a direct way of, you know, like, I wasn't directly, it was indirectly, but it still, it still came back around to me, so, and, okay, I'm getting an answer, so I would, you know, it's-
So what I was gonna say, this is, this is the value when you also, every governance workshop, you, somebody probably went, we just did this with Nick, but you didn't do it with me present, so that was the value, why I wanted to do this. This is the value in understanding what some pain points are, some things that you value, so. I'm not gonna be perfect, but I do recognize that communication is super, super important. Not that I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be perfect, I'm just saying, I'm not gonna be perfect, but I do recognize, David, the value of the communication, you know, it's been very clear and, and when we met, I talked a little bit about some, some of my practices and some things I'm hoping to do and one of them is to not surprise and two is to make sure everybody has the same information. So that's, I think that's kinda what I'm hearing that adds a lot of value for our team meetings, so I just wanted to share that.
And even with some decisions that don't need to come to the board, remember, we have policies and underneath the policies, there's administrative guidelines, okay? Administrative guidelines do not need to be approved or changed by the Board of Education. The vet cannot institute administrative guidelines that are contrary to the policy. So I think about years ago, we had field trip policies and all of a sudden, there was this big push to have everybody go through a security check in order to go on field trips, okay? The law changed in the state of Michigan, we had to then go back and adjust our administrative guidelines because our policy was basically solid saying that we would follow all state and federal guidelines. And so we continued to do that, but then we had to change the administrative guidelines and how we operated as building principals to incorporate that with parents and how we were going to inform them. We just let the board know, this is what we did, this is why we're doing it, we're not asking for permission because it's mandated to us. But at least you're aware of that change that goes on when some parent comes to you and says, Holly, you know, I've been going on field trips with kids for fifteen years and now they want my fingerprints? Well, that's policy that came, or the guideline that came out.
So can I ask this from my learning, Mary, with the, could really change? Because I've been on the outside of all of it and all sentimentality to that program aside, was your desire or is your thought that that should've been a decision made by the board because that influences, or just that we just didn't know that it was happening and why?
We made a big decision to change a practice that affects the outcome of kids and we obviously we do what's best for kids, that takes away from opportunity for kids. So why would we do that if there wasn't a problem, if there wasn't a reason to take that away? I'd still love the answer to that question.
So we just, so you're just saying the concept, obviously that's his choice to make, that's the district's choice to make, but we should obviously know why and what's the reason?
And if I understand, it's because I can't even make anything up. If it's because, great.
I just, well, yeah, I guess, not to dive into the subject, because it doesn't really matter for our purposes.
It's because once kids go there, they never come back and we, the program falls apart, that's not in the data. We have a full couple, many kids that go to A to D still time, so I would like to know why we took an opportunity away from kids that's worked successfully for eighteen years, especially in districts who are developing passions and talents with no reason that I know of. Does that make sense, CJ?
Yeah, and again, the specifics of that issue don't even, don't even bother me, I'm just talking about mentality, just the idea that we should be informed as to why these things-
But at the end of the day, the public is asking us and we're like, and so you're like saying, hey, this is what you have to ask, you know, right? But at the same time, it's nice for us to understand it.
Of course.
Because if we can explain it to them, or, you know, at least say, this is why, but I, you know, go, go talk to Ben, he would be better off explaining that to you way better. And I've done that where I say, you know, that, like, you're gonna get a better answer because I'll just probably level it up, you know, I'll give you the highlights, but yeah.
I can tell you, many times over the years, parents have called me and I go, okay, let me tell you all the reasons that maybe you need to rethink your focus or your logic. And then they frequently will say, well, I forget, I'm not gonna do it. No, now you can do it with the right information at your disposal and properly advocate for your child.
Right.
So I would like, I don't feel like I'm educating for children when we're taking something away for absolutely no reason whatsoever.
Again, I think it's, before we know, but you also, you know, the rationale, so, and I trust when you made the decision, probably, the decision probably wasn't made to just intentionally rip opportunity away, so again, I think it comes back to, we'd just like to know why it was done and what is why.
And that's why you reminded me that said, we had a little bit of the transition with interim because Holly and I talked to Scott, Megan and I asked about Scott, I asked Scott to bring up the meeting so people understood. So those are processes, again, that I hope we get more and beyond that. So principal of things, CJ, does that make sense?
Yep, you got it perfectly.
But Holly, back to your comment too, there's nothing wrong with trying to explain it to a parent and then say, you know, but if you want all the detail, to be sure how the context of the intent is.
Right, right. And I think what they want is that the fear is calm to say, like, if somebody knows that I'm in agreement with, like, hey, I, I listened to what they said, why they made the decision, I totally understand the ten points, the one I might, you know, whatever, like, but at the end of the day, it was ten, you know, points of why they did this and stuff, but it would be better, but I think it calms their fears rather than otherwise you've got, you know, the pitchforks show up later on something that they don't fully understand and so that's why we'd like to be everyone else to know, but yeah.
Well, I'm curious, so that's communication with our board and us understanding decisions made, but what about those big decisions in the community and I guess what extent do you go to explaining those big decisions upfront, like, these are the reasons we did this? Same thing with all the people complaining at Thorn Apple about increasing class sizes. It felt almost like they were just ignored and nobody actually answered-
Their fear.
Their fear with communication. And so, you know, and we told them to go to the principal and that was what I told them, but it just didn't feel like it answered their fear.
Ben, you know what Valerie's talking about, right? We got thousands of emails from Thorn Apple saying, I'd pace, but genetic use of kids' class sizes, find the money somewhere else.
Right. No, I do understand what that, what that issue was. And when you talk, no, you're, and when you talk about the communication pieces, that's always the hard, the hard part, we have to define who's the audience that needs to know, like, would we send that out to the entire district about the Thorn Apple? Probably not. But would we make sure that the families of Thorn Apple know their reasons and rationale? Give them an opportunity to, you know, share their feelings? Yes, I think that would be the essential piece, that would be the audience. It wouldn't be all elementary, you know, families, it would be the entire district, but that would be the audience.
You're much better off being proactive than reactive, because if you can be proactive, you get the information out there, you're gonna calm people down initially. You still might have some reactionary people that you have to deal with, but any major decision that's going to influence families, kids, whatever, be proactive. Be offensive rather than defensive.
And that is what we know has been a weakness, but for multiple years. I do think we have seen some improvements, so I know that we will continue to move that trajectory.
But I think a lot of times we're on, I feel like we're always playing defense because the trust has gone through, you know, down and so we're, we're constantly in this battle instead of, right, and saying, hey, you know, this is like the positive stuff, we feel like we're, we're going against the, there's a huge trust issue.
So back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, when districts were, they lost all kinds of money, it was at four hundred and seventy-one dollars per kid back then, which is quite a percentage. Many, many, many districts had to go to defense. And we did a little thing around our district, we used cow blocks, as we call them, we had cow boxes all over the district. They were, they looked like a gateway symbol or cow boxes or whatever, we had them everywhere and people, the idea was there are no sacred cows, what do we need to look at? People just put pieces of paper in there, we didn't care where the idea came from. And we looked at that and we publicized every comment that was there, every clean comment that was there. And people could see it and all of a sudden it let us make some decisions and said, obviously there's work to do this. You, you, you gotta ask people what they want, you gotta inform them, you gotta communicate. Sometimes there's still a decision to make that is contrary to their individual.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna affect one group.
There's certainly, you've got over nine thousand kids, you've got how many, how many voters and then maybe even non-voters in this community? You gotta be sixty? Yeah, okay. So there's, there's a lot of people to communicate with and I'm just gonna guess, there's gonna be somebody that has contrarian views to the one that I have.
That's why I consider versus incorporating very little.
Okay? All right.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
So, very good. So, very good.
Your first count of the three?
I think there's a point there.
You're not the only one that's, no, I need to know.
That I have no idea that Thorn Apple, chasing grandkids everywhere. I had a grandchild that's, he's, okay.
It's very small. So, oh, yeah, first, so why do you need to?
No, 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 we've got seven. He's junior. He'll be a sneaker right now. It just scores lots of viruses, perfect, one score is the most I have for that. But he gets, maybe that's where he's studying.
I just hear it.
Yeah, and it's, it's tough.
I guess these are really strong questions. Oh, okay. So we are not moving to the end of this room.
Yeah, but he qualified for the Nationals and the St. Louis. I actually, we talked about somebody's counter.
Well, and I think a lot of times that's what it is, right? It's a, it's a, and it's not that they don't have full self-esteem on the things that they can do this to. It's what they have to do that.
Well, I always had brothers who were athletes, or, you know, it's, or whatever they're called. Like, we are, um, whatever. And ultimately, it reflects it as a result. This room is too short. That's sort of a very casual place.
And then he, you know, went to the Nationals. And he's a nerd. He's an absolute nerd.
You know what's been really interesting is we have been watching people who are non-athletes who are just like, they wanna do something different because they wanna calculate how to do things athletic. So football has been huge for people because what they do is they start to understand about, you know, they use their numbers and their probability and outcome and stuff and slowly gauge how to do stuff. It really is a mathematical, like, you can study other people and start to learn how to, how to get some game. So it's pretty, it's pretty difficult. Well, I know, we got, we got number seven as well in this room.
Well, do you? Well, good for you.
Well.
Yeah, ours are 17 to 12 right now.
Mine's gonna be like zero to seven right now.
Well, we went from zero to three in ten days. Our son, my boys, and our daughter had a little girl ten days later. So all of a sudden, they're here, you're in, then they start with more and more.
It's mostly the tribal boys.
We have six and one. One princess and six smelly boys.
That's right, exactly.
Just to take him back.
Aw, look, it was good seeing you again.
Well, it's good to be back here.
This one, I have four.
Oh, he's four?
Four.
Yeah, we just celebrated the birthday for him.
I've never been to any of these.
Never gonna get what, rankings?
Yeah, although that was so funny. So Caroline's in, she went to go see my mom more in Chicago. And my, I went out for my future son-in-law because my daughter's a piece of work. And so she had, oh, good, good, okay.
I'm gonna call her to do this, Paula.
Keep it clean, keep it clean. But actually, most of the people in this district would know she was a piece of work. And so all of a sudden, she's like, we're going on a little appointment tomorrow. And she just pressured him a lot. And he goes, yeah, we're gonna look at ranks. I'm like, very cool. And she's so coy about it. And then I come home and my son has told my dad he's going to ask his girlfriend. So same weekend, isn't that crazy? Yeah. I have no idea how long it'll take either one of them. It'll probably be 20, 25. But yeah, that's kind of cool, so. And so nothing, I, I didn't, I didn't incriminate myself.
Yeah, I did page a voicemail, but I thought it was just a checking in, so.
It was, and she knew she did it. No, no, no.
Yeah, I've been traveling. Well, actually, I was traveling up until last night. Now I'm here for this. And then travel media tomorrow.
I know, I'm traveling.
Good, fun travel?
Often. Yes, well, it is my husband's and my 20th anniversary this month.
Congratulations.
So we're going to the Mackinac Grand Hotel for a, I've never been in it or anything like that.
Nice, nice, if you're like, we're gonna be in it.
I know, I'm super excited. Also, this week, my daughter is part of the Mackinac Island Honor Scout troop. So she's, she's guarding the cannon. And so we're gonna, you know, stop by and take a little peek at her doing her job, her duty.
Did you go on the field trips? We used to do the Mackinac field trips. That's why I've been in the Grand Hotel four times. That'd be a great trip, you know, do that too.
Yeah. I did, I didn't do it once and then I made, then I made run go. I'm terrified about going over the bridge. Like, I, I'm terrified.
You still have my, you know, your, your, your.
Yes, yes, the Yuko that went, yes.
That blew off the bridge.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, you know, raised from up there, so it might be a very big jump over the bridge.
Well, they used to say, where you go, it goes or something. Yeah, it was like, yeah, phrase or whatever.
That was a few years ago, that there was a big deal about, we no longer doing that.
Do what?
The Mackinac Island trip ended, just after.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we know it's the dunes.
But you probably went on it.
I should go on.
The dunes were part of that.
Yeah, I was on the way back.
Were you on the way back? There's a bus.
I can't. Yeah, I think so, so, yeah.
Some kind of force play or something?
Well, the first time that I went on the dunes with family, I, we were, they were talking about you could walk all the way to Lake Michigan, then just walk up and get in a car and come back.
No.
So Austin, right, so that, that's what was told. And, and it was my family members. So what they did is they actually went and parked the car, somebody dropped them off. They walked the beach and then walked the dunes back. So Austin and I are, you know, and we get there, we're like, we meet them up and they're like, no, you gotta walk back.
Yeah, that's a good trip.
So, yeah, then they're done that. So, yeah, next time I'll do the dune muggies.
Just left in Rockington playing football. We would have teams from outside the area come to Rockington to run the dunes, conditioning. We didn't do it when we lived in Rockington. There's reason to enjoy it. If you're going running down dunes, people don't realize how fast you're going all over this.
Yes, and there's that one, remember, the note that says if we have to get you from the bottom up, you get charged.
Yeah.
Like a few.
Yeah, there's a Michigan adventure race in Miss Michigan that we love to do. Which if you haven't done an adventure race, I mean, we're talking about all day long trying to find the flags located wherever. This year, it's at Silver Lake Dunes.
Oh, yeah?
And my husband's like, this is great. I'm like, oh, no, this isn't known this year. There's no way I'm running all over dunes looking for anything. I bet his favorite thing is running to the sand.
Need a hoverboard for the dunes.
Thank you. Why would you have to be brought from the bottom to the top of the dunes?
Well, because it's down in the canyon, the trough is like, it's like, it's incredible.
No, I'm not sleeping here, it gets older than the lake, but there's no.
No, it's one, it's one particular look.
It's one, not a better look, yes, yes.
It's a very long, it's, it looks magical and now I'm sure they have to.
And it's all exciting, then you get to the bottom and then realize you have to go back up.
And I've heard they had to airlift a number of people from the box.
Yeah, and they said we have to pay for a helicopter.
We had a helicopter wrecking in California once, watching a helicopter come in. It was intimidating because you think, oh, my gosh, if I had a problem here, I'd be, dude. And it took them quite a while to get to that person. So, yeah, just be smart. You hear those stories all the time.
It's fun to look, take the pictures.
Yeah, tomorrow we're asking. Right. So, yeah, just like you saw the news, we're gonna have definitely temperatures in Death Valley. So what do people do? They went to check it out so they can tie.
You wanna go to the house?
They don't go here without any water, though. We wanted to see if that was true.
So I wanna check where's, I can just, I don't know, kind of sense this on there as well, I think.
Oh, you said, for these German, it's not the song, but I'll tell me back.
You want us to tell us she's starting up? We're starting up.
I can pop up and tell her. She, she's on the phone.
I just wanna make sure she knows my mother. Go next.
So peak performing governance teams, again, this is kind of a reiteration of what we just talked about. All of you hopefully are here for all children. We talked about that through the superintendent service as well. Should be focused on what's best for students. We talked about a government, a governance team commitment. I'm gonna show you a different one than, basically what you've done, it's just a different style. No big difference there. Again, that dependent relationship, that Ben diagram where you're connected and so forth, that's what you want. Understanding the roles each other's played, understand what Ben brings to the table. However, mutual expectations, mutual support, mutual advisory role, mutual communication. You both have a role in that. It's not a one-way street. Make sure you ask and give clarification. Indicators of success, you're gonna hopefully end up with a strategic plan or at least some district goals that you wanna pursue. And there are different ways of doing strategic plans. They don't have to be, you know, three, five-year-long plans. They can be year-to-year plans as well. You're gonna have to discuss those options, what's gonna be best for this district. And I'm sure Ben will give you some guidance on that and what your feelings are. You are all going to have appropriate roles in the improvement process.
Yes.
Please understand that. And that role does include your education as Board of Education members. And I know we compete against M A S B at times, but M A S B does a good job at bringing board members along and giving you the classes that you need to have. Take advantage of that, especially, I think, has everybody gone through 101?
We have one.
Holly, if not, she's just. Take the opportunity to do that. I think you can do it online now. I think that's something you do. Or if you wanna go up, it's, it's always interesting to go to those meetings too because you meet other board members from other districts. And at times, you sit back and think, boy, we're going through some tough things in Forest Hills or Chelsea or wherever it might be. And then you listen to their horror stories and say, no, we're doing all right. We're doing all right. But it's, it's, it is good to make some connections with other board members too, I think.
And during tough times, that was huge. We had several district, like districts that we would call, say, how are you managing this? Give me some validation. What are some ideas you can come up with? So that's a huge side of the, the M A S B connection.
And, you know, it might be an idea from a little podunk district that you don't even know about, but they're doing some good things. There's nothing wrong with being a good thief and taking those ideas and making the appropriate accommodations so they work in your district. Never stop looking for ways to improve.
On top of the fact that if you ever feel like you're the only one feeling a certain way, you will find other people just like you. Everything is covered in those, those conventions and leadership.
It's, it's just very interesting going through those meetings. So, and you can, I don't even know what status they have anymore, but they, they, you can take, probably get your doctorate in Florida, and work. So they've got enough classes to do that, I think. What's up?
They've gathered a lot of sketches, so let's see.
Yeah, yeah. Make sure that as potential problems come up in the district, that you are respecting other people's opinion. You know, if somebody wants to come up and talk to you, always listen to support members. And you just thank them and, you know, I'll make sure the appropriate people know what's going on and so forth or what you're conveying to me. Be honest, transparent, straightforward with them. Communication is not meant to be, I'm gonna tell Mary one thing and Mallory another thing, just because I know that's what they wanna hear. Communication means to be clear and it means to be concise and it means to be consistent. All right? Absolutely. The same message goes to everyone. Again, seek to understand. We talked about acknowledge mistakes. You know what? I don't think anybody's perfect. I haven't met a person yet. Try to tell my wife she is, but she knows better than that too, so. But, you know, you're gonna make mistakes. And sometimes we make the wrong decision. You can go back. You can have a do-over. There's nothing wrong with that. Avoid surprises and remember, as you're going through this, this isn't about these and ours. It's not partisanship that you're looking at. We're here for kids. And they don't come in pre-marked on their forehead or anything. They're under risk of where they stand. Again, your role is be there for everyone. Be respectful and you have to understand the role you're in and the role confidentiality adds. As a board, as a superintendent, I should say, I shared stuff with the board that maybe I shouldn't have, but I could trust people. And that we could discuss the issue because when we get into some things with staff and so forth, technically, legally, you may not be allowed to have that information, okay? I mean, a teacher goes on leave, it's a medical, that may be all you know. But then all of a sudden, people dig and the rumor mill gets going. You may share something with board members a little bit more, but there's HIPAA out there that you gotta be aware of. And so please understand that if anything had been shared with you from Ben, means to stay in this inner circle. And if you're in closed session, again, we talked about that as we went into closed session in this process. You share anything outside a closed session that was talked about in closed session, you can be fined and charged civilly and criminally. All right? So be careful of that information. Remember your role. I know you have different groups you travel around with or talk with or are friends with or so forth. But we, when you're in this role, you're here for the entire community and the entire school body. You shouldn't just have a focus on football. Don't forget about robotics. Don't forget about middle school wrestling. Don't forget about elementary orchestra or whatever it might be. You want the best for all kids and you should expect to have a great program for every program. You want, you want quality all the way through. We're not gonna operate something just to say we have. If we're gonna do it, let's do it right. Last bullet, I mean, we could have put that in bright red and made it bold and made it a whole slide by itself. But I think you guys have all heard that this morning and understand that, and that's what you need to be. Your relationships need to be based on trust, loyalty, and respect. You need to trust one another. You need to be able to talk things out. You need to be able to ask the right question. You need to be able to ask some questions even in tough situations. And Holly, you may say, well, Dave, I, I, right now, I'm disagreeing with you. Help me understand why you're on this side of the issue versus the other side. Let me explain it to you, okay? It may change your mind, it may not change your mind, but let's listen to each other. And again, talk to each other face to face is the best way to communicate. Texting, phone call, I know phone calls, sometimes you have to because we can't get together. But texting, can you read emotion in the text? I guess if it's in all caps and some of the emojis and so forth that follow, maybe you can. But it's still better to communicate face to face. Maintain your linkage with communities. When I say communities, because your staff is one community, your support staff is another community, your business community, your parents are another community. Collectively, they are your community, but don't, don't always listen. Always be willing to go and speak to them. Always value what they have to say and be open and honest with them as you go through that. This is still a public entity, all right? There shouldn't be anything behind, I mean, Ben isn't the Wizard of Oz sitting behind a big curtain or something. Let people see what's going on. Knowing Ben as I know him a little bit, he's gonna be out and around. People are gonna see him. Okay, staff's gonna see him. That's all important. They need to see you guys too, all right? It's just crucial. Again, the establishment of dialogue regarding district directions. Again, proactive versus reactive. If you guys are thinking about restructuring and closing a building, get it out there, okay? Don't be afraid of some of the negativity that'll come forward. It will, okay? It will. You need to listen to the concerns and so forth. When we shut down our brand-new elementary and we kept our other, older ones open, the brand-new elementary was, even though the same square footage was costing us twice amount, twice the amount of utilities than the older buildings. And people couldn't understand that at first. And we said, well, we've all, we've put in new doors, we've put in new insulation, new windows. We got up-to-date A C and heating systems and so forth. We have CO2 detectors in every room and people didn't know what those were. You've gotta have the new buildings, so many exchanges of air in classrooms every hour, all right? And the CO2 detectors, when the kids went away for music or library or art or whatever, it wouldn't exchange air in that room. Didn't have to because the kids weren't in there. Our utility cost went way down because of that. When people understood why we were closing the newest building and keeping opening the older ones, all of a sudden, it was not a big deal. And we, I think, made the right decision because it's still closed today, all right? So you just have to, again, play offense, not defense. So the standards of practice document, and this, these are the things that you basically covered as you went with Nick. And this is the, the simple one that we have used with a number of districts. And again, you've been wordsmithed, but you're, you're talking about making the success of all students our first priority, setting high expectations, having the trust and respect and so forth on that. You've done it in a little longer document with a little bit more detail. It's gonna get you to the same place. I don't think there's anything wrong with either one of them. It's just a matter of what you're most comfortable with. When you do that, that's usually, and I, I'm guessing, Nick said that's signed on an annual basis, so everybody will do that. Usually, I'm gonna guess January 1st is what you're gonna go with now or the first meeting in January. There's nothing wrong with it. But again, Ben should take a look at that carefully too and make sure that he's comfortable with everything in there because that's, that's the only thing that was done without a superintendent sitting in the room. I guess Nick is superintendent, but sometimes a little different perspective on things. So whatever works for, for the district. So, whatever works for, for the district. What builds respect and trust? These kind of are really filled in ahead of time with other boards have told me. Open communication. So there is a chain of communication that people need to follow. Clarity of superintendent and board member's roles, and systems approach. Systems approach, it's funny how that term has taken over a time. We used to say it was being organized, all right? You need to have, you need to have an organizational chart. You need to have some processes and procedures. Now it's called a systems approach. But it's imperative, okay? People need to know where to go to get their questions answered. They need to know who to contact. They need to know the processes involved. They need to know, I mean, you get into FMLA, Family Medical Leave Act, and all the rules and regulations that are behind something that's out there anymore. The district has quite an obligation with some of that. How is that given to our staff members? And how are they made aware of it? And how does it impact people? It's all crucial. Follow-through will build, if I'm going to tell Maggie I'm gonna see you next Tuesday, I'll have that information. If I'm not there Tuesday with the information, we don't communicate with you, I lose trust just like that, all right? Now, if I go see Maggie and said, hey, the information didn't come to me, I'll get it to you as soon as it comes to me. At least I communicated with her, okay? She knows why I'm late with the information. Consistency, timeliness, cohesive board, support all students and programs. What destroys trust? That inconsistent message. I'm gonna tell Person A, and Person B, and Person C, three different things. There's no follow-through. Adversarial board, like you talk about losing trust of your community. You come in here and you're fighting all the time on every issue regardless of what it is. It's a four-three. And I was an administrator in the district. I was a four-three board, and it didn't matter what the topic was, it was four-three. It's crazy. Catering to subgroups, you can't do that. Again, you're here for all kids. Partisanship and lack of honesty, all right? Those are things. I don't know if you think there's other things that you guys need to build trust and respect with one another? Can we go back to that? Or if you wanna say, well, we wanna work on the inconsistencies and so forth? I don't think you want that one. Is there something else you need to do as a board to work through your trust and respect for each other?
I guess the comment that comes to my mind is that trust, to me, is a decision that you just make to have trust in, in somebody, or even to trust in, for example, the information that we receive. You know, the cell tower, any of these issues where we could say, we would've liked to have gotten more, or we didn't know all the answers, that we didn't have all the information that we would've liked to have. I mean, Holly, I know you've gone and called townships and called people, you know, to get your own information, and that's, and that's yielded things that we didn't know before in fairness. And I think we can look back at that and say, we're all learning. We're all learners at every level, and things can always be improved on. But to me, trust is just, it's something that you choose to, you choose or you don't choose to have it. And I think if we are expecting to try to build it back from the community inward, or even internally upward, it's gotta be something that we have, you know, not just, not that we expect the district to earn from us, or the cabinet to earn from us, or they have to earn our trust back because X or Y happened in the past.
Assuming positive intent and not just always looking for, no, you're trying to pull one over mine.
Yeah, it's a guiding principle of ours that has to be, you know, we're getting committed to.
I mean, I wanna be careful with that. I don't think it's good to live in an environment of like constant toxic suspicion about everything.
That's what I mean.
Correct. But.
I'm not saying blindness. I'm not saying not asking questions.
There are many examples where we did not get the information that we should have.
For sure. And that comes in asking questions, but I think, but I think there's also a, you can send in to a process saying, I'm gonna be suspicious from the outright. Or you can assume that somebody's doing things for the right reasons, and maybe we need to, maybe they didn't do the complete job, maybe we need to ask more questions. But I think the other thing I add up to you that you have is up to.
Yeah, I would agree with you a hundred percent, CJ. I think, you know, oftentimes, it's best to just come at it from that perspective of, well, mistake was made, or they thought that it wasn't important, and it turned out that it was, and yeah, we would like more information. But I wouldn't think it's because it's being purposely withheld.
Or, you know, and it's not just, it's, again, it's the systems. It's a history of doing things for a while in the district of, you know, we have people that have been in places for very long periods of time and are used to doing things a certain way. And it's like, okay, well, it's a different board, it's a different time, we would like a little bit more information, and so it's not a matter of, I don't trust you, it's just, it's not in their habits and their, and the ways that they structure their work to necessarily provide all of that information upfront. It's just a, all right, well, let's try to put new processes in place to make sure that we give them.
Well, information is endless. So I don't think it's more information, it's the information that's needed. And when somebody says, hey, this gap is missing, or could you get this data or statistic from me, then we need response. And that, if that's, that's not habit, that's just kind of sense. When somebody says, hey, I need this to make my decision, the outcome should be that information is for.
Exactly. It's not making a decision without all the necessary information, just based on trust. That's not what I'm saying.
No, you're not. But it's like, again, like we all said, we want more information, but it has to be the right information. And frequently, that is the information that can come about as a result of somebody saying, I need more, or specifically, like, could you answer this question, or it still needs data or whatnot. Same on different stages, okay? Right? You know?
The other thing that comes into play there with some of the information or, or lack of information over the last few years, or last, lack of systems, is that your, past superintendents have been here for years and years at a time. And so, I can see somebody falling into the idea that, well, this information has been shared before, but you're a new board member, or you're a new board member, so it hasn't been shared with you. Or this system, we do follow this, but nobody remembers why that was put in place or what we're doing, so. We've always done it that way. It shouldn't be an excuse, but it is a reality at times.
I guess I, I'd like to see, like, based on, like, the last eighteen months and viewing things that, you know, that, that I've experienced personally, to, and to see what, even what the public community is feeling, is that it's, I think trust is gonna have to be earned back to some degree, especially by the community. But I think with Ben being a great communicator, and we start being more transparent with checkbooks online, or, you know, whatever it is that the public has been asking for, to start making the steps in the right direction to show that we're being more transparent. But I think too, for me, I, I'm a visual aid learner, hands down. If I sit in a long room and have to listen to something for four hours, I will tune out in the first, right? But if you show me, if you physically show me even, like, how, like, like our finance system, if you show me how what school finances works in a, not a slide presentation per se, but a, more of a visual, you know, type thing, I will remember it for forever. But if you, if it's, if it's all this, it's like, oh my gosh, like, it's, it's too much information, but most of the public would deal, you know, would be able to handle something that, like, hey, we understand it so much more now. So I feel like, yes, you're respecting people in their position, and you're trusting that they're gonna do their jobs, right? Effectively, for, for the sake of, of the school and the community and stuff. But I think we've, we've hit a lot through the years, like, I know, like, with, with the cell tower, you and I remember the first cell tower round. Why? Because we were here, and a lot of other people weren't around to see that flavor in the water of what we went through. And so here it is back again. So this time, it was like, let's have all the information so that we don't go through with the same process that we went through before. And so I think for me, it's like, just push, just push the envelope a little bit more and give way more information, so that people feel confident, you know, whatever the decision ends up being, you know? And there's way more stuff out there now. Like, the technology is way, way more out there. So I think for, for me, it's, I just like, would like to see a process in place that just kind of makes you feel like whoever's sitting in the position and given the information that we're, we're getting, what we mean to make a yes or no vote at, at this mic. And, and I don't wanna feel like I'm getting information that's pushing for my yes vote. I want, I wanna make a decision based on, you know what I mean? Like, the, all the information that's coming to us. And yes, I do, I do go out a little bit more and do my own research because I have questions. And, you know, and, and I've been following stuff, you know? Like, I've been following a court case or whatever, and I wanted to know what happened. I called Wyandotte to find out what happened to them, 'cause I needed to hear it, you know? And then from there, it went on a little bit more research. So do I understand cell towers and cell tower companies and stuff a little bit more? I sure do. But that helps me make a more informed decision when I'm voting as well, too. So.
But you've gotta also realize that as you go through this process, eventually, that gentleman's going to make a recommendation to the board.
Exactly.
But with, with the information. And as we go through the cell tower a second or a third time, we obviously wanna learn from our mistakes last time. But I would also argue with you, one of your first comments, Holly, that, you know, you need to build trust back. You've got trust in this community. Your bond should prove that. I mean, that was overwhelming, yes, for a lot of money. However, that does not mean it can't be improved.
Correct.
So we.
Well, the information's always changing, and things are always coming to us. We always have to be on top of that. And I think, you know, it's, yeah.
Okay. Let's get, talk about the goals and evaluation a little bit here. Ben should have goals every year. Without that strategic plan right now, though, and coming in as a new person and with his evaluation, what's, what's the new percentage on your evaluation for student achievement, Ben?
It's a twenty.
Okay, what, was it forty, right?
Well, yeah, it's twenty, but it's locally decided.
Yeah. So you've gotta, you've gotta realize the impact he's going to have on this year's student achievement. I'm not sure how twenty percent of his evaluation can be in that, because he's not going to implement anything over the summer that's gonna drive achievement, except maybe culture, communication, people feeling better about their positions and what they're doing and so forth. That may have an impact. But that isn't gonna be your hard quantitative data. So it does get a little difficult with somebody new coming on board. But as you go through this, obviously, and what form are you guys going to use with your evaluation? You know yet?
Well, one of the, what we're recommending is the MASPE tool.
Okay, yep. And none of them are perfect. You're gonna have to adjust a little bit as you go through them. Rubrics are not easy to write, because again, people that wanna wordsmith, they can go after them, and what this, what this is really mean, going back to that, I guess, but.
I think the nice thing is Marzano is so artsy. You know, that's, that's a cool thing that you can do and give us some evidence why you can do it, and we've had so many questions over the years, but we can't really use our evaluation tool to assess. And MASPE is so much more thorough and so much more, I hope this is syncing in with you guys, just having looked through it. It's a great tool. We've talked about it for years, so.
Yeah, the Marzano tool is about obstruction.
Right.
And that's why they created that, Samuel Danielson.
Right.
MASPE tools ultimately about this position.
And what's interesting is, when did we get required to do a tool-specific evaluation? Was that fourteen-ish? Whatever it was, we had just implemented Marzano as an instructional framework.
Right.
So then when districts got told, Dan used to do a beautiful job. He would say, here's the seven areas, I'm gonna chug two about each one. Then he got told by mistake, you have to use one of these specific tools. And so we picked Marzano because it correlated with our instructional framework. But then over a few years, we were like, wow, okay, so good. Good call.
Your superintendent is going to hit a lot out of your quarterly evaluations and conversations you have with them. It's much more so than a tool, okay? If you're open and honest with your conversations about where this district is headed and what we need to be doing, and where we need to be going, and just be able to have that honest discussion, that's where the knowledge is valuable.
MASPE might help us with accountability measures, 'cause we have the discussions, but then how do we have a rubric to determine if they're taking place? That plus the channel with Marzano.
Well, he's, he's gonna have to be able to support that.
Right.
Whether that's through a document or a presentation here or whatever, that's gonna be supported that way. But yeah, it's, it's a better tool than Danielson or Marzano for this position. It's still not a perfect tool, but I don't know what is out there.
And is that, is that tool you were using?
No, is, we actually use the Collins Blaha, which was specific to superintendent as well. Collins Blaha is a legal firm that created out of Southeast Michigan.
So this was your first kind of.
Yeah. I'm familiar with it, yeah. And Kristen and I had many conversations before I actually got here, and this is one of the topics that we talked about, so school advance was another one. School advance is a little bit more, they do have the district-wide perspective, but they would have your curriculum, you know, there's just more elements, it's, you know, more broad. And when I look at it, it's just, it's, there's a lot of complication. There's summative, there's formative, and then there's a summary piece to it. I just felt like it would be a lot to digest when you do it on an annual basis. And that's kinda what we talked a little bit more about, what we turned to MASPE.
MASPE, but I didn't call it Blaha also, 'cause I don't remember.
Like you said, none of them are perfect. Probably not totally fine with moving forward with the MASPE.
Collins Blaha is solid. I mean, it's like the MASPE tool. I.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah.
Oh, we can give it a shot. If we're not comfortable with it, maybe we can, you know, continue to pursue.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was looking at it and just, yeah, it was a nice sort of rubric of charters, you know, the things you need to do, and gave you, it was very specific.
I did Marzano.
I mean, I did.
I did Marzano.
I did not look at Collins Blaha.
Okay. You're good with it?
MASPE, I took this one advantage on, though, and it was a little bit more convoluted and.
Right.
I think we really could use an injection of some straightforwardness.
That's probably the best way to put it right there.
I mean, and ultimately, like, what I need to, those tools are a framework, and, you know, we talked about that a little bit. You're making some judgments based on how everybody feels and those kinds of things. But I think the, you know, piece I need to understand is, how artifact-heavy is our time gonna be when it comes time for evaluation? Like, are you expecting me to bring in three-ring binder with all kinds of stuff? You wanna have, you know, deal with the conversation? Is it something I'm fully leading? Is it something that, you know, board wants, you know, to say, we want updates on these, these things, or I'll talk about domains? So I bet something I'm hoping to have an understanding of certain in the first quarter.
We were definitely artifact-light in discussion. Hey, so it's very effective. We just didn't have a means of getting together and saying, we're going where we thought we were gonna go. There was just no, we've identified a goal, which is strategic planning, and maybe some more specific bullet points to say, is this something we all agree on, 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 wanna do? You know, Marzano might be, are you using communication to bring your stakeholders together? Yeah. I mean, that's just not something to, you know, prepare some of the things that MASPE seems to lay, lay out. Is that making sense to those who are?
Well, I, I would say, you know, I'm always going to err on the side of artifacts. I mean, that's just the teacher.
Sure.
But.
Reasonably.
Reasonably so. I don't need finders and finders. I really felt like what we got at the end of this year from Dr. Schubel, where she had about a five-page document where she bullet-pointed the major things that were accomplished this year, was fantastic. And I would like to see something like that on a pretty regular basis. I think that was very, very helpful.
Well, you can, part of that, Maggie too, you talked about on a regular basis.
I mean, it was fine regular.
You get it, well, yeah, but you get into a strategic plan, and one of the ideas is that whether it's every other month or on a quarterly basis, we're gonna have an update on the strategic plan. And there's gonna be a presentation made to the board and the public, and it may not be made by this gentleman. It may be made by other staff members that are leading the charge in those areas. So it's on his shoulders, I get it, but I want you to see as board members the quality of people that we have in this district and the work they're doing. And I'm gonna, from that chair, support what they're doing. So it doesn't all need to be driven by any of those presentations. And I just put you the people out there so other people can see them. You won't have enough meetings for the people you have here, I guess, but it's, they're gonna be on teams, and let them shine. All right? That's what you want. Your, your evaluation, and there's some bullet points here, the bottom line is, it's gonna drive your organization to pursue excellence. That's what you want. What do we need to focus on? And that may change year to year, it may change, be very similar from year to year for a while, too. But what are we going to focus on and how are we going to get there? Bottom line is a real question. How can the board and superintendent strategically use the evaluation process to move this district forward? That's the bottom line. It's the same thing with me as a principal or a superintendent doing an administrative evaluation or a teacher evaluation. The idea is to make them better in their position. Then you want to compliment them, but you also want to challenge them. Okay? We all need to be challenging, so don't be afraid to do that. Steps to take, and obviously, the puzzle to put together for your evaluation. It sounds like you've got a, you've identified a tool to use. I think that's great. Have you set the calendar dates for the quarterly meetings? You should probably get those ahead of time so everybody, so Ben has time to prepare for that, too. He may have a folder on his computer, whereas he does things, he's just going to throw it in there. So when he gets close to that, he can draw out all this information and just remind the board of what he's done.
Dave, when you say those practices have that first one fairly soon to establish goals and expectations or no?
Well, we're going to talk about goals here in just a secondary. But yeah, I think those goals need to be established in a timely fashion here. And I think through Ben's not only being here for a couple of weeks, which isn't enough time to do a thorough study of the district, but he did some homework ahead of time on this district. I will guarantee you that. You both, most of your candidates did. But, so he's got some knowledge there, and I think he'd be able to put some reasonable goals together. You don't want to list a fifteen goals, okay? You want two, three, four goals at the most that he can solidify around and get things going. What are the most important things to get going this year? You may say, we want to initiate a strategic plan this year. That's fine. And once we have a strategic plan, his goals are going to fall under that umbrella. And then the administrative goals are going to fall under the strategic plan umbrella as well. And they may have two goals that are related to the plan. And then they may have one personally or a professional goal they want to pursue. And then Ben will work through them with that. But once you get that set, I think that document's going to be just fine. Get those dates on your calendars so everybody knows that that's going to take place. Those don't need to be long closed sessions. They might only be twenty, a twenty-minute discussion. Typically, your first year, it's a little bit longer just because there's more conversation that takes place. But people just need to be open and honest. So we've already talked about this, recommendations, quarterly meetings.
I'm impressed with what you've done, something about board and superintendent evaluation simultaneously. Have you done about that?
Have you done board evaluations?
Yes, one.
One diarander.
The board self-assessment.
Yeah, one.
Do you use it?
Yeah.
What'd you think of that?
It's okay. I like the concept, I'm not sure that.
I don't know that it really brought about any meaningful change.
We just might need a different tool, person, rubric, something.
I'd use them, I'd use them as a sitting board member on a hospital board, where we did our self-evaluation and Trinity would have a, I think it was. Corn, well, no. Corn Ferry, was that the big organization that would do searches around the country for hospitals? I think that's, they hired collegiate coaches and, yeah, they're a big outfit. They brought one in and we went through that, and I, in the same way, I'm not sure what impact that had. I'm not sure how honest people were with some of their responses either. I'm not sure that individually, and I'm probably, I included in this, that we did enough self-evaluation on that also. So I'm not in that camp a lot. If you had a totally dysfunctional board, you may want to bring somebody in that would walk you through and take you through a process and be able to ask the tough questions and challenge you on things. But if you don't have a dysfunctional board, I'm not sure it's going to provide what you want.
So is that why you put that on there?
Organization wanted me to put that on there. So it's on there?
I think it was, I mean, in reflecting back, I mean, it is a helpful conversation for a moment in time, right? Just to kind of say, how are we feeling about things? Are there any, is there anything that needs to be just adjusted? Can I get more explanation on why maybe something is happening the way that it is? So to me, it's almost like it's a moment in time conversation that is interesting potentially. I don't know that it necessarily, I mean, not like we can change that much anyway unless we're completely dysfunctional.
So what I would suggest, then, is during those quarterly evaluation meetings, because part of this is making sure the team is working together, right? That could be incorporated into that. My first year in Chelsea, I had a board member that came to me and said, we were totally dysfunctional. We had seven votes on everything but two items, I think, when I was there. And they weren't dysfunctional. But I ended up bringing somebody from MASPE that was also a trustee in the Eastern Michigan Board of Trustees for the college. And then I brought our school attorney in that way out of Barnum. And they did a session for our board because the region could talk about boardsmanship and the attorney could talk about legality of everything that was going on. And our board members walked out of there because, number one, we're not nearly as bad as really one board member thought we were. And number two, it helped everybody understand their roles and responsibilities. That was one of the better moves I made early on in the superintendency, but I, I didn't think it was a dysfunctional board at all. But we dealt with, maybe we were proactive instead of reactive, I don't know, but it worked. But I would incorporate that into your quarterly meetings, I guess.
Yeah, I appreciate that piece, David. It has to be part of the conversation that, for its self-assessment, there's a number of different areas. And one of those is the relationship with the superintendent and all of that. And that will be a key part to talk about. But it might be good for this board as you go to your MASPE events and that and just figure out how other districts are using it and whether or not it's beneficial for them. Because I could tell you in a previous district, we did it annually. But it was a struggle to get people to do it, right, to get it done on time and all that. And then the summary was done and then the data board and self-assessment committee, and then the committee would get together and it would, you know, these are action steps. They did struggle with implementing those action steps. But what it did do is identify those areas where, you know, two board members thought we were, you know, really good with X, but the other five thought we were horrible at it. Like, it did identify areas that you, as individuals, thought the board was, and it wasn't necessarily reality. So again, just trying to figure out what the benefit is and knowing that it's there. It might not be MASPE tool, but you have to constantly be looking at ourselves to figure out how we get better. And I will, and I will help with the conversations with, you know, how things are going, you know, with the team of leaders we move forward in the quarterly conversations.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, weird challenges we ran into this. I had an agenda once that we were going to incorporate a self-evaluation, and we can't do that in Open Meetings Act. That's what we were told. That's why we had to separate up, do it separately. And I think that calls into question how comfortable people are having those discussions. So just maybe some creative ways to make sure it's very natural and that something has to be set aside and get each other, I don't know. But that was very strange to me that we could not incorporate our self-evaluation into a closed session with superintendent even though we're a team of eight. Yeah, so anyway, just.
Not one of the reasons you're going to a closed session.
Exactly. So it just made it a little more awkward that it had to be this standalone thing, but if it just flowed naturally out of the discussions about your relationship with your superintendent in your district, I think it would be much more authentic, right? Exactly. So it's hard, so anyway.
Well, you have to almost come into doing like a work session rather than a public work.
Which we did.
Have a discussion.
It was the days people said, I don't want just talk about each other ourselves.
And your documents are public.
Right.
And we sort of massaged the definition of superintendent evaluation in the last couple of years. This is sort of saying if it is pertinent to superintendent's doing his or her job and how the board is functioning is pertinent to that, like, we sort of, it was our way of having other topics brought into some of that.
Yeah, I still know that we did a lot of self-evaluation, but, you know, very big wiggle room, who knows?
Actually, one thing, one thing that benefited, I think, one of the workshops that we did is we actually shared why we got involved, which is a great question that you would ask.
That was with me, I think.
But I'm just saying, I just felt like it wasn't, you know, everybody has. And they even say that, like, you know, when you read some of the stuff, you know, like, about board members, why people really get involved and what the toppings are. But just to hear everybody's passion behind why they got involved was, you know, then you could see when you're having a conversation where that driving force is coming from.
Yeah.
Which was, you know, a good tool.
Yeah, it is a touchy situation of all of a sudden, you're doing your self-evaluation and that information is dealt with at a public meeting. Everybody's hearing it. You just need to be cognizant of that, it should fill it out. When we were in the hospital board, everything was closed off. It didn't have to be in a public. And I'll tell you what, people are much more honest that way than, we don't have to be so careful with their words.
Because you don't have Facebook and channels like Telegram, Signal pushing things out.
No, I get that. So recommendation, again, I think we've already covered that. You guys are following that. And then, you know, you look at goal examples, and, you know, we got SOAR, we got SMART, we got SWAC. We've got, just go back to the old method ofology of goals, objectives, and strategies. I don't know, Ben, how you set up your goals in the past, there's different ways of doing that. But I think the one thing that some of the old systems didn't incorporate that you need to incorporate is putting a timer. When is this going to be accomplished? When are we going to get it done? Because it seems like with some of the old methodologies, they just went on and on and on and on. And there might be rationale for that. If you make goals, I mean, when you look at a superintendent's goals or strategic plan goals, you find many that are dealing with academics, they're dealing with communication, they're dealing with finance, and then they're dealing with culture and safety in schools. Those are the four. Now, finance may include facilities, as you go through that and so forth. But those are, it seems to be the four major areas that are there. As a superintendent, then, you're usually writing maybe two goals that fall under that umbrella of the strategic plan. But then you are maybe, there's going to be a professional growth one there, too. Maybe it's, I'm going to finish my doctorate. Maybe it's, I'm going to get more involved in the state legislative process. And I'm not sure what, or where Ben would go. But when I, I wrote a few things down, just when I was here with your focus groups, again, things that came to mind were communication. People were concerned about finances because stinking enrollment, that was one of the big deal. And then all of a sudden, the State Aid Act comes out, which is no foundation grant increase. How is that being incorporated by the district? Systems approach that, that was loud and clear. Culture, that goes back maybe, talking about, I think somebody said that we've had one year of change, we've had three years of change. I mean, that's, that's how do we get that culture back? Academics, where people were going with that, they combined that with reputation. Forest Hills used to be number one in everybody's mind around the state of Michigan when they talked about academic, and what school districts were very solid. You're at the top of the list, but you're not necessarily number one in everybody's mind. How do you get that back? And that's not turning the light switch on or off. How do you get that, your client Kellis changed, so does every other district. What do we need to do to get that reputation back? People were missing that. Maybe they're part of the problem, too. They're sitting in laurels. You know, we've always done it this way, it's always worked. What do we need to do to improve? Those are the areas that I heard. So how do you condense those into goals and what Ben wants to accomplish this year? And you need to write those out, and they don't need to be extravagant. I mean, when you write any goal, you want to be able to make sure that it's broad enough to cover what you want to cover. But then as you break it down, you know, the goals and objectives and the strategies you're going to use, how do you fine-tune it? And, I don't know, Ben, have you thought about goals here?
Yep, I have.
A day ago, I figured that.
Yeah, I have. And I have wondered if we talked about things as I'm making my transition and having all these conversations like that, and I'm learning a lot. And it could be a bias with some of the pre-research that I did. It seems to be like strengthened as I'm having more and more conversations with people. But there, you know, certainly, communications was one. And I talked with those of you that I've already talked with, I've talked about some of the things that I'm looking at doing. So that'll definitely be one that I want to be a goal because that's going to take a significant amount of, you know, my time and my team's time. And then where, where I was strategic plan is another topic that I talked with all of the members about that I've met with so far and will later today. So just where we want to be at with the strategic plan. So maybe in year one, we start laying the groundwork and those kinds of things. And then the finances or the revenue related to people enrollment and others, the things that we can do to increase our revenues. Like, those are, those are three big bucket goal areas that I was thinking that we might go through. So it might be advantageous to, you know, after, you know, basically, the transition plan is laid out in three months, but after you kind of get into two, maybe start talking to solidify what those are. If you want to wait till three and then, you know, after three months, it's, you know, I'm open to that, too. Bottom line is I'm going to, those are areas that I know I'm going to be expending energies. So those are likely going to be where I'm, where I'm at unless I get just some stunning conversations over the next month, month that are different than what I've had so far.
What other areas did you have in mind as board members that you think you might want to?
Well, I mean, those are nice, good, broad, big areas that we can just pigeonhole us.
Well, those are big buckets and then.
That's the dark one.
I don't want to talk about goals until you have a chance to get to know our district. Where I just throw things at you, and you say, that sounds good, and then you learn a little more and say, that's ridiculous, or it's not, you know what I mean? So the idea of waiting into two months into your transition and even how the transition and the goals align, and is that, is that a sub for, is that a shit goal at your first evaluation? I mean, is that the best time to discuss that once you've got a couple of months on your belt and?
Yeah, like, could you, within, like, the end of October, like, be able to narrow those three buckets or those three umbrellas down into three smaller pieces?
More focused areas, for sure.
Yeah, like what under communication by the end of October have you determined is the first priority?
Then hopefully, then we'll become a discussion. So we all have ideas in our head. I mean, we've talked about program models, not sure where that fits. But, you know, we want you to say, you know what, you're right. I think there's some things we need to revisit, or let me tell you what I learned and that's no longer necessary. So I think we probably all have very real things in our head. Nobody needs to bias you or, you know, it might be, that might be, do you find information by now? You know what I mean? I'd rather see you learn and then it would be a discussion of this is something we were all thinking of. Am I making sense to everybody?
Yeah, because I think, you know, we all represent a small section of the community. So we kind of see what we hear the most. But you are going to have a much broader view. And so it'll be good to hear, I hear, I hear all these individual thoughts and opinions, but here's overall where I think is the big deal that we need to figure out first. And then maybe some of those things will fall in mind.
I think the other thing is it'll, it'll help, even though I'll be doing more than just what we set as goals, it'll help identify what you all want me to report out on, too, when we do get together, even where there's other things that I'm going to be, you know, doing. The other, the other piece in the open mind is when I'm giving you the weekly updates, you already see you have transition plan, you know, kind of giving you some activities. So you'll see some of those things in that that will be related to as we, you know, go with our machine goals, too. So it'll all be part of it, too.
Yeah, and I think, you know, some of the things I listed, for example, with communication, that's going to be a goal. I think the culture improvement is kind of along with that. Part of that communication goal may be to do a cultural survey in the school district later on, too, or something. So a lot of these things can tie together. But you've got to, Maggie, you're right, you can't have this, I mean, so broad of a goal that incorporates everything under the sun, even though that's suggested.
I know, right.
I was excited. After two months, we have people saying, here's some big things I want to tap into right away because I think I can really get us on the right path. And then we can say, sounds good. Strategic plan, I almost hope you tell us, I want to wait till January or November. I wish you would say, based on my experience, I hope you guys are comfortable with us initiating this effort at this point.
Yeah, I'll tell you where I'm at now. I'm talking six of the seven. It makes sense to not try to jump in and do something right away. Is, so my thinking around it would just simply be to be taking in information learned during this year on what our needs are. And then also be thinking about how, how we would initiate, probably starting over. That's kind of where I'm at right now, based on the conversations that I've had, that would probably, what's best for the organization and the refocus. But start laying groundwork so that we can hit it either in the summer or the fall and then move forward.
I'm just excited that you're coming from a different vantage point than we've been sitting in, like, so close to it and listening to the voices and always. and listening to the voices and always like looking on defense all the time for stuff instead of on offense. And so, I'm excited about having that fresh look, that fresh view of, from all different angles that he's gonna be able to see and bring back to the table to maybe know a little bit more of that. Like, you know, you can start to see it moving in the direction of it, you know.
Your strategic plan is something to keep in mind, and I've seen all kinds of timelines coming up. There is some advantage of timing that implementation or the final design, so it feeds into your next budget. In other words, if, we don't wanna start a strategic plan in January because we may not be able to put our money where our mouth is, 'cause our budget's already set and the categories are already set where we're gonna spend money. So, would we be better off finishing that in December with the idea that it's gonna kick in July 1st, but it also drives professional development, where we're gonna spend our money, what's important to us, because then those, they coincide.
And I definitely should have terms, starting the strategic plan, yes, but the process itself was very lengthy when we gave it a shot last time. So, are you talking about starting, start the process of developing the plan, or plan on initiating the plan?
I would, I would say plan on initiating the plan.
And what's over the year?
With the school year.
Right.
But the process is gonna be at least several months.
Right, right.
So, it could be in the next school year.
Right.
That's where I'm going too.
That's what I can see with this being by the end of June. These are the initial foundational steps that we've set for.
Just so everybody understands this, maybe you're right.
So that we're really teaming up for this.
I don't think anybody at this group is concerned about that.
No.
Is there a lot of goals you can set and things you can shoot for without having a strategic plan?
Right, absolutely. This is, this is gonna work. There's gonna be something, you know.
Don't be busy. I don't think Ben's knocking under his desk almost today.
That's funny, he told me his handicap went down six.
That was your president. I'm not gonna say that. If I actually said that, I'd say he shouldn't have admitted that.
To put a definition of finances, I would assume it's, we are now a declining enrollment district. What are we gonna do to get our structural balance back in check, right? We have all heard a few times, like Sarah said, to us, other people, this board has to be prepared to make tough decisions. I'm so humbled to be a part of this board. This board is very prepared to make tough decisions, they just have to be given that opportunity.
And the information.
And, well, again, state, this is what we're looking at. There are things we'd love to see launched, maybe in September, facetiously, but still. There are some discussions this group has had, and they're not happening. So, you know, what are some big ticket items we can start looking at? Is there a focus group warranted? What is the process we engage in to start that communication taking place in a way that will make it successful? Makes sense?
Yeah, it does, and there's two sides of the finances. So, there are the reduction, and there's also how to generate. And that would be another part of the discussion that we already sort of already started a little bit too.
Nice, nice.
That has to happen as well.
Just nice to have definition of the terms, communication, strategic plan.
Yeah. I do feel sorry. We're gonna keep, you got all of you busy, you have to cut it out, 'cause that finance one can be difficult.
Yeah, for sure.
'Cause you don't control every input coming, coming from the state.
Well, we're used to being busy, right?
I think that's all I have for you, unless you've got something for me.
A lot of thanks for being here and having that discussion with all of us. And I appreciate everybody being willing to go through it again, even like, if we get a new board, you know, if we add a new board member, you know, we have to consider what's the value of continuing to have discussions with everybody. So, anyways, appreciate you being here, and I think you've officially, are we like your last group you're working with?
No, I got one more.
You got one more, okay. You said that you were retiring.
Bridgman, I'm done.
Oh, very good.
Well, I'd be hungry to retire me again, but Bridgman's, it's a weird little district. It's a very well-to-do district, because probably sixty to seventy percent of the property in Bridgman is out of formula property, second homes, or the nuclear plant down there and so forth. So, lots of money to spend for kit. They started the process, I talked to them in the winter. And they set up a scenario in their mind, and they thought their assistant superintendent kinda being ready to take over. But the board decided to, we're gonna interview, we're gonna do a full search. We're not just gonna hand a position to somebody. And they decided to do, do that, so they internalized, so I shouldn't have to complete the job. And, 'cause one of the things I always tell boards when they have internal candidates, maybe wise to put them up against other people, because then they're gonna earn the job. I don't care who you are as an assistant superintendent or superintendent, you have some detractors in your district. You've stepped on some toes. They're just annoying it, those detractors are still gonna be there. But if they win the job in a fair competition, you're gonna sway some of those detractors. Maybe not all of them, but some of them. And he just said, "Nope, I've been here too long, I'm not gonna go through it." Now, I think he's painted himself into a corner with the board, and the board is saying, "I don't think we want him," which they probably would've hired him. So, we're not, we did the focus groups in May. We're not posting it till the end of August. And we did the focus groups early on, because everybody's around at the end of the school year, not during the summer. We're gonna hire by the end of December, but they don't start until July 1st.
Wow, it's a long process.
It is. Luckily, it's fifteen minutes from my office, so it's not there. But it's a weird, it's a weird deal. And there's a tax tribunal case going on here, where the nuclear plant is, they want their taxes drastically reduced, and that's going to affect them. They'll still be out of formula, but instead of spending twenty-three thousand dollars for a kid, they might have to only spend twelve thousand dollars on kid, which is a huge.
Well, thanks for not retiring before you gave us.
No, that's fine. Good group to work with, you got a good guy heading up right now. We should just be reading about Forest Hills for the next seventeen years, and I think seventeen years is the minimum.
It's a competition that's gonna go to twenty.
Seventy, year forty-nine, I'm not sure if they want to.
Well, let's see, Ike, this is year fifty-three for me. So, all right, well, good luck with everything, glad I could help, I hope I helped at least. Seriously, if you ever need anything, all you gotta just call.
Thank you.
Always wanna help, and we won't even get charged for it, so.
Thanks very much, Dave.
All right, take care.
Thank you very much.
All right, so from that conversation, we, it sounds like everybody is on board with us using the MAS B tool for our evaluation. Val, I think we need to vote on that.
Yeah.
So, we actually need to have a motion to use the MAS B tool to evaluate our superintendent. So, can I have a motion to do so?
I think we use the MAS B tool to evaluate our superintendent.
So, Bart. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we will use MAS B. As such, Val, we have, there is mandatory training we have to take on the MAS B tool, thinking that we might be going down this MAS B route, so we told everybody to sort of save the date for the twenty-fourth or the twenty-fifth of this month? I can't remember. Sometime later, about a little check of the date, so that there is a mandatory training for that. I understand a couple of you can't make that date, 'cause you're out of town, and there is an online training available tomorrow. Okay, so we will have to figure out a way for you to get.
Is it just visiting? But I mean, is it asynchronous, can I just tune in anytime, or is it?
No, I don't believe it.
Oh, okay.
Maybe he's not the only one that's gonna have that draw.
I'm pretty much out, how, August.
Yeah, same here.
Oh, okay.
We need to use it like in October, right, for the first time or something? We have a little.
We have it down to this month, is that the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth?
It's the end of this month sometime, I've got it on, I can't remember.
Is it on our calendars already? I'm trying to.
Actually, the twenty-fourth was the hold the date.
And it's a, you know, and it's exactly that I was thinking.
I gotta think that there's gonna be.
At six P M. on the twenty-fourth.
Available, 'cause.
Yeah.
This is the, so the twenty-fourth was at Ken ISD, now, in all reality, it's probably happening across the state.
Other places.
Multiple ISDs, other areas, but we can come up with some other times if they're available, and let you know when they are.
I agree.
Yeah.
But in the meantime, should I register, is it five of us?
Chris, I, I think.
That's what I was like, I'm, we're leaving on the twenty-third, we're leaving on the twenty-fifth, I can't remember which. So, I might actually be though.
'Cause I thought the only thing that I got a note from were Mallory and I.
Then I probably leave on the twenty-fifth, but off the top of my head, I was like, oh, it's the odd number, I would use a twenty-three. So, if I, if I didn't say no, then.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, then I go.
And then do I need to register three for tomorrow?
What time is it tomorrow? Do you know what time?
I would have to double check.
If it's after hours, I'm good.
And I would've told you no.
That's what I decided.
That's just like a six to nine thing or something?
Yeah, six to nine.
And we're gonna see if I can find it to, before you go. Quick.
Okay, so the one, July sixteenth is virtual.
Yeah, that's when it's tomorrow.
Yeah, well, that's for those that have.
That's a set time? Do you have that?
That's what I'm looking.
I can't give numbers.
I'm trying to pull mine up right here real quick.
Your site is not very physical up here.
No, it's not, I'm like, oh, I found the superintendent tool, but after.
That's the only, that's the only thing else that we have this month, Val, is the twenty-fourth, correct?
The hard thing was that, like, you have, you have to be trained by, what is it, August first? Or you have to do the training by August first, right?
Well, by law, it's just a law.
By law.
It is. So, there's July twenty-second training in Livingston. I just looked it up. That's what came up.
So, then what happens if we're not?
Well, I think that they'll, they'll continue to have training, I mean, it's, we aren't getting, there's gotta be.
Can we ever even know? At some point, can you just interact with them and say, "We have board members that can make either date, what's plan B?" You know, just see what.
Well, I can tell you.
I'm happy to watch a recorded session of the training, if they have one.
There's one August seventh, one July thirty-first, and one July twenty-second. Twenty-second is at Livingston in the evening. The thirty-first is Coors ISD, which is north, and the thirty-first, five-thirty to eight-thirty. Then Bell and Dale's August seventh.
So, nothing blows.
Yeah, so nothing super convenient, but.
And nothing is virtual, just July sixteen.
There was one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
August is a perfect time to see.
Yeah, there was one at the end of June and one at the end of July. So, hopefully it's something that they will record and, you know, yeah, if you didn't catch it, here you go.
So, if not, all seven are fully trained by August first, that's probably.
That's what I was gonna say.
Val's getting that to check.
Okay.
I watched some kids pull out of Northern and go on a red light immediately. It was a clown car full of girls from training. So, I, I like behind them like this, just holding the camera up, and you could see them all turning around, going, "Oh, my God, so let's record it." And then I just have the coach know, hey, I just wanna tell them, yeah, when you get that many kids in a car, you should probably be, okay, you don't look like traffic lights. It's just one person in the car, they should probably be traffic lights.
All right, is there any other business that we need to take care of today?
I do, go back a second. We want to establish quarterly meetings, while it breaks here, you have your own calendars.
Oh, yeah.
I can check room availability.
Sure thing. So, first one would be October.
Is that okay, Ben?
Well, that's four months in, instead of three months, so I'm just not sure, it's October.
I mean, the full three months, the full three months would be done, but, yeah, October's, I mean, it's finally, it works for.
Early October.
Late September, but what's your preference?
I'm fine, I'm fine with October, like I said, it works.
Let's do, yeah, let's do early, early October, and then next year can be early January. Or try to fit something in late December.
So, I'm gonna do late September, and then February, so. Yeah, yeah, I'll go, October.
So, a good first or second week in October, Val, is that probably?
Our regular meeting would be the twenty-first, so, I mean.
October or October?
So, then our September meeting is the sixteenth, so like maybe something like, come October seventh.
Or even thirty, I just heard Ben say his ninety-day plan will be done, and I think he wanted some overlap, I just.
Don't do it September thirtieth.
Don't. Oh, interesting, okay. After September thirtieth.
I'll do my October first.
That's my birthday.
You're a, oh, come on, I don't gotta do that.
Oh, September thirtieth, oh, okay.
It's an excuse to have cake.
Why do you not October one?
I'm October two.
All right, so what's open after the thirtieth?
Well, I guess it depends on, are you guys thinking evenings, correct? Or early evenings, or how do you?
What works best, everybody's.
Evening, okay.
I can read early evening.
So, just the third, this room is unfold already from four to seven. The second, looks like, you know.
I can't, I haven't classed that night.
Oh, yeah, that's your birthday.
Well, I mean, I, I, sometimes I never think that I teach that night.
First?
First, this room. It's unfold until, it's used until three-thirty, so it wouldn't be able to be an early evening.
Well, four by four, four to three. Is four to, like, four to seven, or whatever?
I need time to set the room up.
Oh, come on, Dale.
Yeah, okay. Okay, and it just moved there, so. So, I'm, I'm not sure I will be back in town yet. About the eighth or ninth.
Would we say board meeting with me?
The eighth would be good.
Uh, the twenty-first, October eighth, wide open.
Okay.
Eighth, October eighth?
It's a Tuesday.
Yeah, better for me.
Six-five.
Okay, so what, five. Naomi, what time can you get here work-wise? I mean, I work at five, but, I mean, like, okay, we put you like in a, where it's three hours.
They tend to be a couple.
Usually a two to.
Yeah, but we didn't do us, wow, new leader.
Well, I mean, I probably mean the initial one and all that, I mean, I would plan on probably a couple hours.
Two.
Yeah, I think we might book that.
I'd say we, we can save to book three.
Yeah. On the eighth is day six, and so that's, I need to be at work until five, unfortunately.
Five, thirty.
Seven.
Five thirty to eight, somewhere on the calendar.
Ratchet week every month, where your hooker booked.
The times.
So, does five-thirty to eight-thirty work?
Just put that on the calendar.
Breakfast table.
Yeah.
So, we just, you know that your week is on.
Just one meeting.
What, Maggie?
I said there's a swim meet right next door at the same time, so if anyone would like to walk over and see the ratchet state of our pool during a swim meet, you could go with it.
Did that for four years.
All right, okay.
October, so then the next one would be in early January.
All right, which day, October, September?
October eighth, that's five-thirty.
January sixth, school starts again.
Yeah, do like Tuesday to the seventh?
You know, and maybe we can tie that, we'll have to have an organizational meeting.
Right.
So, if we, and we do it early in July, tie it with our organizational meeting. Yep, sorry. Um, that tends to be quick, and then we can go right into.
And like, do that before your committee meetings, so everybody's.
Yeah, and something, is it possible?
Yeah, and something, is it possible, like, that one of these, we could not do an evening one, or is that just an impossibility?
I might have that scheduled for the second semester.
And Mallory works every day, it's really, oh, it's, if it's, if it's early in the month, that's bad. If it's late in the month, I can.
You wanna do it before your committee meetings, it just makes sense to get your new people in the right places and then you can see your work.
Will be the week of the thirteen. Should we just do another?
No, what I'm saying is I, evening I can do during work the first week of the month. You can or cannot the first week?
I can do evenings the first week.
Okay.
So this will have to be.
All right, so do we wanna try to set that then on the January seventh, Tuesday? After kids go back?
And so will Tara's.
And do an evening one, because Mallory has, can't buy day in day in the first week of the month.
Looks like the seventh, eighth, and ninth is good for this room, so whichever works.
Does that work then, for to come back, like, the day after school, when to get back?
Maybe those days were.
Yeah, it's not there.
I mean, I didn't.
We could do it, we could have started at four.
Yeah, I don't, I just don't.
Ideally, that, like, I guess selfishly, I would prefer to do the eighth, as you talked about coming back from, right?
Right, just the way you've got to catch up, yeah.
That we have to do on the agenda.
Okay, yeah.
Do the eighth? The eighth, all right, I put the eighth, so. What time?
I could start a little early on that day if we did.
Four? Four? So that was four, work coming in, or seven?
The idea is we're done, is it traditional to do the June board meeting this one? The, the final evaluation is completed and approved, right?
We've never pulled that off. We've always seen a trickle in July.
It always took me out.
Because this is scheduled, so we do a June board meeting and then somewhere after we have our evaluation and finalize it sometime in July. Would be a good thing to change, we've just never pulled that off.
Okay, that's all, just kind of work backwards for our next, uh, next couple.
We couldn't try to plan?
I would say, yeah.
End of March.
Yeah, we're planning ahead right now, we could.
Do it or?
So that one was early January, February. If we did the next one like late March, and then the next one after that could be in June.
Like the twenty-fifth or something.
Spring break's gonna be first, like, in April.
First full week.
Okay.
First full week.
I'm worried that kind of changed.
The gym meeting is early, so.
You were trying to say that.
It will be earlier.
You're just gonna touch my I S D. Because if you're doing late March, then early June, that's two months, which is.
But we do have the budget meeting later in June, so it could be a good get that meeting.
That's what I'm saying, if you wanna do that board meeting, which is also so much else on that meeting.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes.
It doesn't matter to me, like.
The June regular board meeting.
Yes, our retirees and our award recipients, so I can just get that on stage.
Yeah, by law, it has to be done early in the calendar year, and I talked with the, well, the three of you that were on that, which are not doing it, even, they're not evaluating, but, as I was coming here, negotiations given in December, maybe, but we can talk to them through, throughout the year, but, yeah, it doesn't matter, if it's done in June, I guess that's a valid line.
So are you looking at March, Kristen?
Well, we could either do that last week of March, right before spring break, or we're pushing into mid-April, if we get to after spring break.
What if we did it like sometime on like the thirty-first, first or second?
Oh, right.
No, you're not, it's pretty great because the seventh is first, officials, uh-huh, it's late this year.
Thirty-one, one-two, or Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Uh-huh, I mean, I'm assuming we're gonna be out of school Thursday, the third or fourth of that week?
First and second right now, looks wide open here.
Should we do the first then?
Yeah, but that's the I S D calendar.
Tuesday.
April four, so.
That's the, that's the I S D calendar of that week. I know, I'm just assuming.
Well, if they were joking, yeah.
Yes, I know.
Uh, do Tuesday, April first?
Sure.
Ooh, you want it on April four, so.
Yeah, we do.
If you want it during the day, I think it's Monday.
You can do the thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
Vision of a five joke.
I'm like, yeah. Monday, the thirty-first, yeah. Three. That we can do. Either morning or afternoon.
When do the thirty-first is gonna be, nine to eight?
You wanna do?
I don't know.
Thirty or nine?
Starts by nine.
Nine to nine?
Thirty-first.
Look, Mary's got ready needs and her.
I noticed that too, my auntie's easier.
Oh, sure. I got three percent left on this baby anymore, so, oh, that's right. You could just.
So is it April first?
No, that's March thirty-first.
March.
So there's a few more days to change your mind. That's true.
Yeah, you've got two weeks to change your mind, let's go for past twenty.
Twenty and a half.
And then we would need one more. At, yeah, like the end of June, or, or early July.
Uh, if we're. Just, but within a calendar year, though, would you want to meet early in June and then a little bit late June, is that what you're thinking?
Okay.
I think the other thing too, I guess, not trying to complicate things, but I know that the merit pay component to the negotiation process was done based on the evaluation rating, which you're gonna get into if you do it in July, a different fiscal year.
Yeah, right, so we can release you in a late June finalized.
So at least it's known financially or whatever.
Right, so June second or third?
Yeah, let's do that.
I suppose.
I mean, if we could do the eval before the main, before the regular board meeting, all just becomes another little quick line item, just saying, approve the thing, right? I mean, that would be too much to probably add to the regular meeting.
Just a little bit more for you guys, I mean, as all your kids finishing school, other day and stuff.
So you will have, in anticipation of the same schedule, I have some curriculum committee meetings that week, the third and fourth, if those schedules.
That's, that's true.
Okay.
Because the board meeting will be the night, correct?
Would we wanna tack it on after the curriculum meeting?
Once I'm on very. No, curriculum is, oh, it would be.
Yeah, do it in the heap, like, curriculum, you got your curriculum subcommittee, and then just stay on and do.
Could this one maybe be two hours to, since it's the final, and we've already discussed all the things leading up to this?
Yeah.
Just imagine, we're putting three hours on the calendar, I love it, it's gonna be three hours every time.
Okay, right, yeah.
So you're saying Tuesday the third?
No, I'm gonna.
Wednesday the fourth.
Is it June?
Okay, Wednesday the fourth.
What time do you say?
I would say curriculum.
I need a start time, so if curriculum is done, we can.
Curriculum is normally scheduled three-thirty to five-thirty, I believe. That one often has very little added.
I was just thinking that.
Um, because there's not a lot that goes up for approval as we break for summer, so.
Five-day, then.
I think five is probably safe, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, do you have a calendar you're looking at, like the end of year ceremonial meeting, uh, celebrations and that for the high schools?
Right now.
Then there's a ton.
And I wonder a little bit, but, I mean, we can put it down, but.
Oh.
Yeah, that does run into the, it's the senior.
Those will be done, but.
Most of those are good seniors, so.
Oh, see, we're like, that'll all be done by, you know, we already have.
They're done in mid-May, yes, yes, yes. Because like, how like graduation is like nineteen, twenty, twenty-one at the night, no? Well, I'm just saying exactly, it's around that time.
No, but there's still stuff going on, elementary.
There's still some, but maybe.
We will have busier months.
There's gonna be a conflict somewhere.
I mean, it's like, yeah, right. Kind of this far out.
That's all right, yeah.
Right. There's gonna be something that we're.
So if we see June fourth, five to five.
So June fourth, yeah, five to five, and then we need to have another one late June to finalize, or we're gonna just tack that on?
I would just tack it on to the.
I think we either tack it on to our budget meeting, which would be a separate date anyway, right, or just add it into the regular.
Yeah, let's not do another.
Okay, perfect, that works.
Is it just more, you're just announcing?
Yeah, so just, right, yeah.
Regimen to be, uh, minutes.
Is that it?
Good, so.
One percent.
It's just important.
I know, isn't that awesome?
The annual M A S B meeting is October twenty-fourth this year, so put that on for your, that goes away.
Where is it?
Lansing.
Is it Lansing, yeah.
It's in Lansing again.
So just so you know, if you guys don't decide what to do, or the group decides what to do, at least have that on your calendar.
And the registration for this opens soon, I think, and we should register so that you get.
That's why I'm running.
Right, the calendar not like down the street.
I don't even wanna do it.
Not, only if you, like, I'm gonna go to like a really early one.
And they have sessions still lying there.
Yeah.
Do lots of.
It's in Lansing.
It's very slightly different, but Lansing, just somebody think about, you know, have you seen a schedule on that, online, a little schedule online yet, so people can get a feel if they're gonna do.
Yeah, I'd love to see like the different breakout sessions.
I don't think that's. I thought they moved it from Lansing.
It's in Lansing, it's not at this year, it'll be up north again next year.
No, no, I know, but I mean, based on feedback from last year's Lansing one, I thought they moved it to a different location, not at north, but someplace else. We should double check that.
Maybe it's somewhere else in Lansing, but it's, it's.
Yeah.
I saw it was still in Lansing.
Then Lansing.
Okay.
Next year. The M A.
I remember, because I was just on there recently checking the, how many S B credits I had.